Time is 7:00 PM. I'd like to start. Can everybody come in and take your seats? I'm reminded that everybody, please silence your phones, your cell phones. If you need to take a call, please just walk out to the hallway, to the cafeteria. You can answer the phone out there. I'm also reminding everybody, only water is refreshments this evening. No chocolate, no food. I don't know if they have concessions out there. No concessions either, I'm sorry. No entrees. No hot food. Just another reminder that all the town meeting reps check in with their precinct chairs to get your assigned clickers. And again, you can sit anywhere you would like in the auditorium. Please come on in and take your seats. We're gonna start. Good evening, everyone. I now call the order, the May fifteenth, fifth session of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Stoughton. This meeting is now in session. The town meeting is being held in person at the Stoughton High School Auditorium at 232 Pearl Street. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation and is also being recorded for future broadcasting. Please rise and stand if you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our country's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Thank you all very much. Please be seated. We now need to determine if we have a quorum. I'm gonna call on each precinct chair and please shout out their numbers. Precinct one, Juan Fox. Precinct one is nine. George Stilinski, precinct two. What's up with that, George? Precinct two is twelve. Matt Callis, precinct three. Ten. Precinct three is ten. Julie Jito, precinct four. Precinct four is fourteen. Precinct five, I'm not sure who's standing in for Kamel. Eleven. Thank you very much. Precinct five is eleven. Precinct six? Ten. Precinct six is ten. Diane Dolan, precinct seven? Ten. Precinct seven is ten. David Sheehan, precinct eight? Ten. Precinct eight is ten. All right, we have a total of eighty-six town meeting reps, so we have... The quorum is eighty-five, so we have one more than the quorum. So please, nobody move from your seats this evening, okay? All right. So we have eighty-six in the house tonight. Hopefully, we have a few more people coming in as the session goes on. Just as a reminder, we are present this evening in the house, the select board and the school committee members. We have town council, town clerk, assistant town clerk, and moderator secretary. We have the town accountant, chair and vice chairs of the finance committee, town manager and the superintendent of the Stoughton Schools. And as I like to always say, of course, we have you, the town meeting representatives, and you are the legislative body of this town. And just a reminder, no funds can be spent in the upcoming fiscal year without first being appropriated by you, town meeting. Procedural motions are still in effect. And just a reminder, if you do move the question to cut off debate, it does require a two-thirds vote to pass, and debate will be cut off. I don't take the motion to cut off debate during technical questions, but I just want to give you a reminder, the technical question has to be germane to the article. Last week, I let it kind of get a little bit, escape a little bit away from the article, content of the article, within what they call the four corners of the article. So I'm gonna probably do that a little more this evening, if it goes outside the corners of the article. All right, we made a motion last Monday evening to take Article thirty-five out of order, and that appears on page thirty-two. Article thirty-five is on thirty, on page thirty-two, it says, "Hanson School Playground Reconstruction." All right, first of all, I need a motion from the thing com. Vaughn?
That the town vote pursuant to general law chapter forty-four B, the Community Preservation Act, to appropriate the sum of $950,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Fund Balance for demolition services, site work, and purchase and installation of equipment and any related professional services therefore, for completion of the reconstruction of the playground at the Hanson School.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Johnny Zavino. I need the finance committee report, please.
Finance committee voted nine to one to accept and recommend to town meeting Article thirty-five.
Okay, this is Article thirty-five. Mr. Zamanian, you're gonna lead off the presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So Article thirty-five, the Hanson School Playground, came to the CPC for $950,000. That was $250,000 for drainage issues and $700 for a playground. This falls under the recreation slash open space category of the CPC, and it does meet that requirement. On the seventh of December in 2022, the CPC voted eight to zero to recommend this article to town meeting. Just wanna give a real short shout-out to some of the high school students on the advisory council who came to the CPC through the school committee and had this idea, wanted to bring it to town meeting, and I'm very grateful that they did that. We've done a lot of advertising to bring in new projects to the town, and these young ladies responded to that. With that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Rob here, who's gonna give the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zamanian. I'm very pleased tonight to be joined by several Hanson Hawks who are here in support of their article. They're very excited to be here, and they really wanna listen to everything that we have to say. In your books, you have the backup materials. On the first night of town meeting, we also provided updated background materials. The only difference between what's in the book and those updated materials are the procurement information. So the procurement information wasn't in the book, so before town meeting began, we put on the virtual table the procurement information. That's the only difference. Everything else remains the same. As Mr. Zamanian said, two years ago, the school committee approached their student advisory committee and asked, "What can they do for students? What can we do for our students?" And the three students on the student advisory committee came up, Sam LaFarge, Morgan Gropey, and Raina Tat, and they had a great idea. They said, "Let's look for a new playground for the Hanson School." So I have Sam LaFarge here to say a few words on that behalf.
Hello, nice to see you all. As Dr. Rob said, I am Samantha LaFarge, and this project has been very important to me as I went to the Hanson School myself. And I've always hoped to give back to the community that laid the foundation of my childhood. As a child, the current playground seemed amazing to me, but as I've gotten older, I've seen the issues become very clear. Many areas of the structure are not safe to children and can easily cause injury. The structures are beginning to rust with age, and the woodchip base is also a hazard. Another pressing issue is that the lack of inclusivity within the play structures. The new playground is intended to be inclusive to all, which is extremely important to me. The current structure has been in use for many years and has gone past its intended lifespan. A new structure will provide fun for many years to not only the Hanson students, but the entire community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope you all see the importance of this project as I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And Morgan Gropey is competing for Stoughton High School at a varsity lacrosse game right now, as we speak, and I asked her to write a brief statement, and so I'm gonna read her words to you. My name is Morgan Gropey, and I'm a junior at Stoughton High School and serve as the chair of the student advisory committee to the school committee, and unfortunately, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting due to an out-of-town lacrosse game. Two years ago, the school committee asked their advisory committee for suggestions on what we could do for the students of the Stoughton Public Schools. During those discussions, several of us mentioned the poor conditions of the Hanson playground and hoped that a new handicapped accessible structure could be available, like it was at the Gibbons School. Now, two years later, here we are. Morgan says, "Some of my fondest memories of my elementary years were playing on the playground at the Wilkins and Hanson Schools, the joy of chasing friends around and seeing who was the fastest, even if we could never agree." While I attended Wilkins Elementary during the day, I went to Hanson for extended day, and the Hanson Playground is used daily by the students of the school, extended-day children from around town, as well as families in our community when school isn't in session. As a place where children are constantly moving around and making memories, it's important for this environment to be safe, inclusive, and exciting for every child who comes into the gates of the playground. This is why I believe that it's in need of an update. With the current conditions of the playground, there are rusted and damaged playsets with sharp edges. Children are running on uneven surfaces due to large tree roots sticking up from the ground, causing children to trip on them and not making it easy to move around, either in person, on foot, or in a wheelchair. An update to this playground will bring overdue modernizations with handicapped accessible structures, even playing surfaces, and opportunities for children to make amazing new memories. By approving this article, this will bring us one step closer to a safer, bigger, and brighter place for students to grow and connect with others. And Morgan says, "I ask that you please vote in favor of this article, and thank you for your support." If I could ask for the slide with the pictures of the playground?
Just a moment, please.
There are pictures in your book. I'll keep going while we find those.
Okay, Dr. Rob, thank you.
There are certainly pictures in your book, and these same pictures are also in your handout. The existing playground at the Hanson Elementary School is twenty-two-plus years old. I learned this evening that it was built in two phases, beginning in 1998, which makes the oldest portions twenty-five years old. It's a ninety-five-hundred-square-foot structure consisting of a swing set and three play structures with various climbing, balance slides, and bridge elements. The average length of a playground these days is fifteen to twenty years, and so you can see that the Hanson Playground has passed its useful life and showing signs of deterioration. The coated metal decking and support railings are starting to delaminate and expose sharp edges, and I'm sure these students here this evening could show you that and tell you that. In addition to replacing play structures, the shallow roots of the pine trees within the playground are creating a safety hazard. Runoff from the hill causes problems with standing water on the playground, and drainage improvements are needed. And you can see some of the drainage issues at the bottom of the slide there and how the tree roots cause tripping hazards. If you advance one more slide... You can see further some of the drainage issues, particularly under the swing set. And one more slide. And you can see how some of the edges are delaminating and causing sharp edges for our students. The current playground doesn't include structures that are considered accessible, nor does the surfacing meet accessibility standards. The goal of a new playground is to include structures that meet the needs of all children in our community. And if you go to the next slide, you can see, as Mr. Zamanian said, the design and installation is broken up into two parts, $700,000 and then $250,000 for the site work. We worked with Mrs. Brutini at Town Hall, and we've secured the procurement rules. There are several layers of procurement to this project, and we have commitment on the part of the town and the schools to make sure that we're following all procurement rules under thirty-B and thirty, thirty-nine-M. If you forward two more slides, we have our commitment, and then the following slide is the budget. And so you can look there, the playground design structure for three hundred and fifty. MHEC is a bid that follows thirty-B. We can procure the structures that way. The installation and the poured rubber surfacing will go out to bid, and then for the drainage, that design, we have our house doctor firm here that can help us with that, and then the construction will also go out to bid for a total estimated cost of $950,000. So thank you very much, Mr. Mullen and members of town meeting.
Thank you for your presentation and to the students for your presentation. Now we open it up for technical questions from the town meeting representatives. Are there any technical questions? I believe Chet Collins was first. Jim, I'll get to you in one minute, please. Chet, the technical questions, go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry? I'm just, I'm for pros and cons. I'm sorry, I'm just...
That's okay, we'll get back to you.
Yes.
Mr. Guerin, please state your name and precinct number, please. You have to turn it on if it's on on.
Jim Guerin, precinct six. Through you, Mr. Moderator, the presenter. The poured rubber, rubberized surface, is that permeable?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It's similar to what is currently at the Wilkins, is what we'd be using.
Thank you. The trees that are intruding on this playground area, they're going to be cut down, are they?
We're trying to determine that right now. One of the designs that we're looking at would actually move the playground back about ten or fifteen feet. That would allow us to keep the trees as a shaded area and keep them away from the playground structure, but we're trying to figure that out right now.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guerin. Actually, Becca, right behind you, Mr. Starr, is Becca Marksen. Let her speak first.
Edward Starr, precinct six. I was just wondering, the cost of drainage, to me, it looks like there's no cost, it's just like an estimate. Does anyone have an actual cost? Because I'm sure somebody has done that before. There's only so many, the volume of dirt to use, plus these people have the experience that should be for many years, they should know in advance, within a few, maybe plus or minus ten percent.
No, thank you for the question. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Joyce Susani, our maintenance supervisor, to speak to that.
Thank you, that's an excellent question. We would be employing the services of our house doctor, which is DRI Architects, and Warner Larson Landscape Design. Warner Larson's done the drainage here at the schools. They do a ton of playground work, and they work with this particular manufacturer. Our concern, that the $200,000 is a maximum. We will use what we need. It's not anticipated that it will be the whole amount, but because it is at the end or the bottom of a quite steep slope, they will look at all the runoff concerns and design a drainage system that's appropriate for the site.
Is the company going to estimate plus or minus ten percent as usual?
We've included a contingency in the project total, so we have contingencies available. It's a $50,000 contingency in the whole project total.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Next up, Becca Marksen, please state your name and precinct number, please, and your technical questions.
Becca Marksen, precinct seven. The fencing that surrounds it, I'm assuming it'll continue to, new fence will be erected. Is the field any part of this, or is the field a completely separate project at some future point?
The field would be a completely separate project. This is just the playground itself and the drainage associated with it.
Will the gaga pit be incorporated or separated out?
It would remain separate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Peter Murphy. Please state your name, precinct number, and your questions, please.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. And the scale of equipment, is that gonna also include a handicap swing? I believe that previous years, we purchased one for one of the playgrounds.
We did for Gibbons, and we're looking at all options right now, so certainly, we're gonna have handicapped accessible options. I can't guarantee it'll be that exact swing, but we're certainly gonna have handicapped accessible options.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next up is Dave Laurie. You have technical questions? Please state your name, precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, precinct six. Actually, coming off of the last speaker's question on the handicap, is there a line, it's not line item, all the playground structures, but do we know how much it would cost, the portion of disability structures? Do we know what that number is? At least when it went to the budget, I bet.
I don't have a cost of that exactly, but it's our expectation that what we put up is going to be sensory-friendly and accessible to students, both physically accessible to students, but also from a sensory-friendly point of view as well. But I don't have a definitive number breaking that out, no.
All right, so is there a list of all the structures, what each of them are gonna cost?
So three weeks ago, the manufacturer came out to the site, measured. We looked at the trees and talked about moving it a little bit further back to encompass it and maybe squaring the site out. He is now, owes me this week, two or three designs that are base designs that we get to choose whether we want a woodsy look, a more modern look, whether we want a slide and connecting structure for a setter structure, or something that's a climbing structure. And then we're going to be able to engage the students, both the high school advisory group and the students from the school, to help select the elements that'll go in. Much of landscape structures, equipment is handicap accessible, whether it's wheelchair-accessible or, as Dr. Rob mentioned, meets the needs of kids with sensory issues. And we will make sure, I will make sure, that we are including a decent percentage. We'll certainly have things that are totally handicap accessible, there are some that you can approach, and there's like a transfer into a piece of equipment, or there's, like I said, the sensory areas, which tend to be kind of around the perimeter and separated from the busy play structure to meet those children's needs.
So through you, it's just a matter, now we just are to know that any of the design options, any design option has enough money for it?
Mr. Laurie, you had two questions. You had your two questions.
Well, one was a, one was a takeoff of the original question, but...
Well, I'm calling it two. Thank you very much.
You're calling it two.
I'm calling it two. I'm just gonna be very strict tonight, we gotta keep moving this. There's a town meeting rep in the back. Can you please state your name, precinct number, and your questions, please? There you go.
Linda Rinaldi, precinct...
What precinct? What precinct?
Five.
Five, okay.
How long will this project take?
We'll be working on putting it together through the summer into the fall. We're hoping to get started late spring, summer of next year.
Okay, and what would the kids do?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Playgrounds are very popular right now.
Sure.
And as we're talking to the manufacturer, being told that there's long wait times for ordering things.
So if it runs into the fall, what would the kids do? What'd they do if there's no playground?
The current playground wouldn't come down until the new one is ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other technical questions? Seeing none, seeing none. We're gonna move into pro and con debate. Mr. Collins, you're up.
Thank you. I'm very much in favor of this, excuse me, the playground redesign and...
Chet, if I can interrupt you, just please state your name and precinct number.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Chet Collins, precinct one, member of the finance committee. I just wanna tell you, town people, town members, that I'm very in favor of this article for the Hanson School. Last year, I brought my granddaughter up from Texas, and I took her to the Hanson Playground, and she said, "Grandpa, this place is a dump." And I had no words for her, and so I took her to another playground up at West Street, up there. And so I'm very much in favor of doing this playground. And I wanna say thank you to the CPC for allotting the money for this project to go on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins.
That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Next up is Becca Marksen. Name, precinct number, and...
Becca Marksen, precinct seven. I am 100% in favor of this. We are a Hanson family, and I'm very proud to be so, and I'm very excited about the thought of a new playground going in, so I urge all town meeting reps to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca. Next up is Pat Colburn. Please state your name, precinct number, and your pro and con.
Pat Colburn, precinct four. I'm very much for this. I just have to say, I was the PTO president when we built this new structure, the colorful pieces, and Chet will have words later. It was pretty high-tech at the time, but I just wanna let people know that the Hanson families raised every cent of that money. We actually built it ourselves on a Saturday, and this has been explained to me many times, and I've never understood why some playgrounds are covered by the town and some aren't. But I'm thrilled, if this gets passed, that the Hanson families can have a wonderful playground again and that those parents won't have to just dig even deeper into their pockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next up, I have Diane Dolan.
Diane Dolan, precinct seven, finance committee. I am very much in favor of this. I have two grandsons, one who graduated from the Hanson, one who still goes there, and I think this would be a wonderful thing for all of the kids at the Hanson School. So I urge everyone to vote positive for this.
Thank you. Next up, I have Mr. Ed Quigley, then Alicia. Alicia, you were there first, okay. Thank you, Mr. Quigley. Alicia, please state your name, precinct number.
Hello, Alicia Rinaldi, from precinct four. I am strongly in favor of this playground as a Hanson parent myself and I'm the current PTO president, well, one of them, and I am very excited about the idea of a new playground that can meet the needs of the children who attend the school and also meet the needs of our community. I've been at the playground when children have been hurt and injured and have been bleeding as a result of going down the slides, and so I would hope that this body will approve this request. I do acknowledge it's a lot of money, but it's not going to get any cheaper to fix this in the future, so I hope that everyone will vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quigley, please state your name, precinct number.
Ed Quigley, precinct two. As I mentioned earlier to Dr. Rob, I was the principal of the Hanson School when the first phase of that playground went in in 1998. And as one of the previous speakers alluded to, it was done basically funded by the PTO, both phases, I believe. The work was done by a local contractor in exchange for the soil, which was useless to us because it was quarter inch of soil, and the rest of it was dirt and sand. In those days, drainage wasn't anything anyone thought about. So the fact that they're getting giant puddles is not a surprise. There is no drainage. I think it's a reasonable request, given all the work that goes into putting one of these playgrounds together, and I know how expensive it was twenty-five years ago, so this does not seem out of the ballpark at all. I would strongly urge everyone to vote in favor of this, and I would like to go down the slide once it opens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Dave Laurie. Please state your name, precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, precinct six. I'm also very much in favor of this article. I am one of the parents involved in the neighborhoods where the parents used to get together and actually construct this. We used to get wrenches out, and we would put together, you know, almost like an Ikea piece of furniture, we all had to kind of, but it was, you know, there were like twenty parents. We used to have, you know, pizza after, we'd get together, it used to be like a social event. It was a lot of fun. We'd have, you know, it was one of the rare times in which, when you first move in as a family, you got to interact and know the parents of the kids who, of the kids you're going to school with. So I think the thing that only makes me sad is missing out on that kind of thing because we end up with these very, very expensive design, you know, very expensive contractors, I guess. I just don't understand why we have to spend $950,000 to get a playground. I think it's over the top. There's, I believe it should have ADA, it should have disability, children should be able to play just like every other child, but even when you add that in, I still think it's over the top. So I won't say much more about it. So I won't say much more about it. It's just, it's sad that we just spend money just because we have it in CPA as a bottomless pit of money to be able to spend. But other than that, I'm happy we are going to replace it. And I apologize for anybody who got hurt on the apparatus that I helped install 23 years ago. So I hope everybody's okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, I have Peggy Seawick. I think before you, Dave. Sorry. Peggy?
She jumped back one, two.
You want them to go before you? Okay, Mr. Billow, go ahead.
Thank you. Dave Billow, precinct four. We have three daughters that are graduates of the Hanson, so we love the Hanson and certainly hope to support, everyone supports this article. I did just want to encourage the design team to recognize the value of the five trees. My wife also works at the Hanson, and she's reported that on the couple of hot days we've had already, kids are gathering under the trees in the shade. It just seems like it'd be a great loss to lose five shade trees in the times that we live to get rid of all the trees and all the shade, even with the beauty of the new playground. So thank you and support the playground.
Just a reminder, I'm not insulting, hopefully none of the town meeting reps, but don't forget, if you're in favor, we already heard, there's a lot of people in favor. I'm just trying to keep this moving along. I'd love to stay here and hear everybody if you're in favor, but there's nothing new...
I would have been dumb by the time you said that.
I know that. That's why I try not to say it.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. The only thing that I have to say to this is I want to commend the CPC for involving the high school and the students, so now they get to see how government works, and hopefully they will be filling our seats before you know it.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Peggy, go ahead, introduce yourself, please.
I would like to move the question in favor of this article.
All right. Thank you, Peggy. I was waiting for you there, okay? All right, that's the cutoff debate. We need two-thirds. I'm going to do by voice vote. Oh, that's okay. That was Peggy Seawick. Precinct two, for those who didn't know her. Thank you, Peggy. All right, going to do by voice vote. All of them in favor of the cutoff debate, say aye.
Aye.
All of us opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. There's no doubt in my mind, the motion passes the cutoff debate. All right, we're going to move right to the motion. Are we ready? Please vote now. Article 35 passes, 100 yes, four no, one abstention. I declare that a vote. All right, thank you all for your participation.
Thank you all. Thank you on behalf of the Hanson Hawks.
Thank you, Dr. Rab. All right, next up is, we're going to turn to article 39. That appears in your books on page 35. Article 39 on page 35. All right, we're just going to, please don't leave your seats. Well, I'm just going to take about 60 seconds here so that students can exit the auditorium safely. Okay, just a couple of quick announcements. Town Council Brian Winters is not here this evening. I just want to introduce everybody. Take town council this evening is Kate Federoff. That's Kate. And also, I want to just mention to anybody, if you need them, we have assisted listening devices. You can see Kevin in the middle up there with the soundboard there. Oh, there's one more, I'm sorry. One more available for this evening. We'll have several more next Wednesday. All right. All right, so if you need an assisted listening device, see Kevin. Okay, now we're on article 39, page 35 it starts with. And this will be, the motion will be made by, who's going to make the motion? Steve Cavey? If you could? Or Deborah Roberts? Whoever you prefer. Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, everyone. The proposed motion, move that the town vote to repeal and replace the current Town of Stoughton Personnel Bylaw and insert in place thereof the proposed revised consolidated personnel bylaw on file with the town clerk.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second in that, for the record? Carolyn Campbell. Motion's moved and seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Thank you. All right, this time, we're going to have a presentation by Deanna for us, and you can introduce your speaker.
Thank you, Steve. Hi, everyone. Deanna Chasko, HR. We have attorney Jack Dolan. He's HR counsel. He's going to do a short presentation on the repeal and replacement of the bylaw.
Thank you very much, Deanna, and Mr. Moderator. Thank you as well for allowing me the opportunity to address town meeting this evening. If I could have the next slide, please? By the way, don't try folding your computer screen like that at home. It just won't end well. So these are the topics we're going to cover in less than 10 minutes, so I'm going to move right along. So I was asked to take a look at the town's bylaw. I'd actually had occasion to deal with it a number of times as first labor council and then HR counsel for the town. So I was familiar with it, but I was asked for my opinion about its present efficacy. And ideally, any bylaw should be these things. It should be clear and concise, following the KIS principle. It should be user-friendly. It should be effective, and it should be adaptable. And I'm going to pause just for a moment on the adaptable part. I think if our recent experience with COVID has taught us anything, especially about what you need to be in today's work environment, you have to be adaptable, you have to be nimble, you have to be able to quickly adjust to changing conditions. In my opinion, the current personnel bylaw is really none of these things. And if I may use a technical legal term borrowed from Mr. Collins, I guess it was his granddaughter, the current bylaw is a dump. Why do I say that? Well, it's overly complex and legalistic, and I say that as a lawyer. You know, I deal with statutes and interpretation of those all the time, and I frankly find this particular bylaw very difficult and convoluted to deal with. In some ways, it reminds me of the Internal Revenue Code. I believe its genesis many, many years ago was a bylaw from the state, or state policies regarding personnel. And then more recently, a number of communities adopted state models when they were first looking to adopt personnel bylaws in those communities. I know that this particular bylaw was drawn from a town, another town in Massachusetts, and that town, like many others that had bylaws similar to this, has since replaced it with a more user-friendly bylaw. And I think that's the way to go here. The trend is away from complex personnel bylaws like the one you presently have and towards a policy model rather than a bylaw model for most personnel matters. You'll still retain, obviously, control over what's most important to most taxpayers. I certainly respect this and feel the same way. You want control over the budget. You always will have that. As the moderator mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, no funds can be expended until they're appropriated, and you'll still have the appropriation authority. But this model would be a policy model with policies adopted by the Board of Selectmen. It's been very difficult to recruit people when you have no flexibility in your personnel bylaw. The personnel bylaw that you presently have has proven to be very, very costly to the town because there are provisions in there that in some instances have provided greater benefit than enjoyed under some of the collective bargaining agreements. But because of provisions in those agreements, certain employee groups were able to capitalize on those improved benefits under the personnel bylaw. But mostly, it's extremely difficult to modify. There's no flexibility built into it, and it requires coming to town meeting for every little tweak. In particular, as I mentioned, town meeting vote is required to amend the classification and compensation plans with respect, and I'm just picking some selected elements. I could go through almost any provision of the personnel bylaw and point out areas that are difficult. But with respect to discipline, fortunately, we don't have a lot of need to discipline town employees. But when you do, this bylaw is both oddly very specific in certain areas and extremely vague in others. And just to give you one example of why the bylaw is, in my opinion, somewhat unworkable, it allows for an appeal by any employee to the select board anytime they receive any level of discipline, including a verbal warning. That's just not something you see typically. The definitions in the bylaw don't apply to some town positions, and the leave provisions of the bylaw are inconsistent with the direction that the town has gone in most of its collective bargaining agreements. So we could have simply chosen to change pieces of it, but whenever you do that, you tend to create unintended consequences, and you end up with sort of a patchwork quilt of provisions. So generally, it's better to start fresh and have things be internally consistent. So what I've suggested and worked with the town to develop is a personnel bylaw that basically, as I said, is based on policies. So whenever there's a change in, let's say, the Family and Medical Act, which is federal legislation, instead of having to change a bylaw at town meeting, the policy that's affected by that change in federal law or any state law can be amended much more quickly, and you don't end up with inconsistencies between an existing statute and your bylaw, or in this case, a policy. It still requires the creation of a human resources system. It would require the adoption of a number of policies by the select board. And in the meantime, just to make sure that there's a transition from the current model to the more workable, in my opinion, policy model, the current leave and other benefit provisions of the personnel bylaw would stay in effect until those are superseded by another bylaw, I mean, by a policy, excuse me. So where are we now? We've drafted a proposed personnel bylaw. That's what you have before you this evening. It's about three pages as opposed to the current 16-page document that I believe is also included in your materials. The warrant article is before you this evening, and the only remaining task, if you are in agreement with what I'm suggesting to you and what the town is supporting, is adoption of that bylaw this evening. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, let me just read the municipal regulations recommendation. Municipal regs voted 3 to 2 to refer to town meeting, article 39. All right, so we heard the motion, the presentation. Now it's time for technical questions. Anybody for technical questions? Mr. Dolinsky, please state your name, precinct number.
George Dolinsky, precinct two. My question is this: How many town employees are there that would be affected by this versus the number of school employees?
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dolan.
I'm glad you asked that question because the number of employees affected by this change is extremely small. It's approximately 35 employees out of all the town employees and not even counting any school employees. It doesn't affect school employees at all. Only 35 non-union employees on the town side of the ledger.
So what we're saying, we're putting in a policy just for 35 people, and you haven't answered the question as to how many school employees, or what are the other employees? We've got multiple departments, we have a lot of people working. Who were the 35 that we're just covering?
I don't know them by name, but I can tell you that those are the employees who are not covered by collective bargaining agreements with unions. And again, this would not apply to any school employees. So if anything, you know, I think that, in my opinion, strengthens the argument that having town meeting vote to change a personnel bylaw that affects only 35 individuals is really, I think, a burden on your time and also best left to the day-to-day management of the town and the prudential affairs that you've entrusted to the Board of Selectmen.
I personally think...
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dolinsky.
Thank you. My two questions are up.
Next up is Pat Colburn. Pat, please state your name, precinct number, and your questions.
Pat Colburn, precinct four. My mind is blown when you said that this is only the 35 non-union. Is there any consistency with this bylaw in the contracts? I mean, do we potentially treat one group of people, say, in a dramatically different way than the non-union? Through you to HR counsel.
With your permission, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
Again, I think you raise an excellent point. Part of the problem when you have a bylaw as opposed to policies is that to change it, as I mentioned, you have to go to town meeting. The contracts are adopted roughly every three years. There's always an effort to make contracts somewhat uniform. There are provisions in the bylaw that differ from the provisions in the contracts. Having the ability to change the bylaw, which would then be done through policy without a town meeting vote, would help to foster greater continuity among the leave provisions and other provisions of the contract. So I think it's, that's another benefit that you've identified.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next up is Peter Murphy. Go ahead, sir.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. So in essence, most of the town employees that are union, their policies are done by contract. So this, anything that's given to the contract employees is typically given to those 35 employees...
Is there a question there, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay, get right to the question. Clock is running.
So the 35 individuals, do they mostly follow union contracts in general?
Sometimes they would follow, other times they might lead, depending on where it falls in the contract cycle. But as I mentioned, the town tries to be somewhat uniform among the provisions that should be uniform. Obviously, some contracts have unique provisions. I'm not sure if I've addressed your question, Mr. Murphy, but...
For example, vacation days, holidays, those type of things that are granted through union contract, would those be granted through this change in here instead of coming back to us?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, they would.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next up is Joe Scardino. Is it working? Okay, we'll get you...
Joe Scardino, precinct one. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to attorney Dolan. I can appreciate the need for flexibility and not having to go to town meeting, but I'm a little concerned about the policy issue. In this town, we don't do a good job with memorializing our policies. In this town, we don't do a good job with memorializing our policies. The last time I looked at... I'm getting to a question.
Okay, as long as you get to the question, sir.
What are we, what are you recommending of what new policies on policy memorialization are we going to do in order to ensure that the rights of the employees and the certainty of the new bylaw and the sanctity thereof is preserved so we don't have to dig through Select Board Minutes to find policies that were enacted 20 or 30 years ago?
Mr. Dolan, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I can describe how the process has worked in other communities where I've helped the community do exactly what I'm proposing that the town of Stoughton do here. In those other communities, once town meeting approved the change, those communities very quickly moved to promulgate new policies for all the things that you typically would need in a municipality. The things that are required by statute, the things that make sense to have, anti-discrimination policies, all those things, leave provisions, everything that's in the bylaw now would then be made into a policy. That can be done fairly quickly, assuming the Select Board is in agreement with the drafts. And the way it typically has worked in other communities, and I expect would work here in Stoughton as well, is that those policies would then be placed on a website for the employees and sometimes in a bound book. And as employees are onboarded, they would receive it and existing employees would also be given copies. You know, again, it's very important for the employees to be aware of what the policies are so that the town can then fairly and adequately and uniformly enforce them.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Jim Guerin. Please state your name, precinct number, and your questions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Guerin, Precinct 6. I'm a little confused about the first line of Section 4 of your draft here. It says, "A human resources system shall be established." Are they going to have a separate human resources system here?
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
Right now, the bylaw serves as a type of system, a set of guidelines that govern those 35 or so employees that are subject to it. We're proposing that policies then be put into effect to replace the provisions of the bylaw that would be going away. So there is a system now, there would be another system, but it would be a system that's more readily adaptable through personnel policy changes.
Will this new system apply to everybody else in the town? I don't understand why it should be separate.
Only because there are certain employees who are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement and therefore have to have, if you will, your own set of, their own set of rules. There is an effort to make that set of rules and the provisions of collective bargaining agreements as uniform as you can, but under the collective bargaining law in the state, each union bargains its own benefits and conditions of employment. So sometimes there is some variety.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guerin. Next up is Jenna Schneider. Please state your name, precinct, and questions, please.
Jenna Schneider, Precinct 6. Through you, Mr. Moderator. In setting up these systems, you had referred to other towns doing this quickly. Can you estimate for us how long this transition's going to take and the training that might be, that's my second part of this, and the training that's going to be provided to employees to bring them all under this, to bring those employees under this system?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In terms of promulgating new policies to replace what would be going away in the bylaw, I can promise what it would take me to produce those policies and that would be about a week. Those would be drafts that would then have to be considered by your town government. I can't speak to how long that might take. Obviously, they want to give it careful thought. But whatever length of time it takes once they receive those, the training could be prepared in anticipation of adoption of those policies. So, I mean, this could happen very quickly if there were a will to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next up is John Inzovino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Inzovino, Precinct 4. Two questions, if I might.
What was that, Victor?
Two questions, if I might.
Sure, go right ahead, sir.
To the previous speaker, you had mentioned that when you have a bylaw, it has to be revised by town meeting, and this is relieving that burden. But we are voting on a bylaw, correct?
You're voting on a bylaw that is very brief and has as its heart, if you will, the provision that allows policies to be created under the bylaw without town meeting vote. So yes, you are adopting a replacement bylaw, but it's a very modified abbreviated version of the cumbersome one you presently have.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
We hear you now.
The second B. You mentioned this only applies to 35 employees, but within this bylaw, it says if there's a conflict between a collective bargaining agreement and the bylaw, the collective bargaining agreement would overrule it. But if it doesn't apply to anybody but the non-union people, why would that even be in here? I'm confused.
I don't anticipate that that provision will be needed. It's really just there as sort of a safety net, if you will.
It sounds like he answered it. Thank you very much.
Well, how do you have a safety net for something that doesn't exist?
Thank you very much. Next up is Eric Coleman.
Eric Coleman, Precinct 5. What are the jobs that these 35 people have in the town?
So this would be any non-union positions.
Yeah, what are the jobs that they have?
It could be the superintendent of public works, it could be the police chief, it could be the fire chief, it could be the treasurer-collector, the assessor, the town clerk, HR, town engineer, director of development services, director of human services, there's anybody, the assistant superintendent of public works, the deputy police chief, the assistant fire chief, anybody that's non-union, this bylaw would represent their benefits is pretty much what it would be. Right now, the bylaw that we have, we have all of these other 230 or so employees that have union contracts that dictate what their benefits are. So what, just to give a little bit of brief history, this bylaw was put in place in 2013, the current one. It was at the time told to the unions and it was in some of the union contracts, you can have the best of both worlds. If your bylaw reads that you have a better bereavement leave than your contract, you can use the bylaw. If your bylaw gives a better sick leave, you can use the bylaw, things like that. The current bylaw has cost, one example I'll give you, it cost a couple hundred thousand dollars when it was first put in place because public safety, police officers and firefighters, they don't get overtime when they work on a holiday because twice a year, they get a holiday pay. They get one in June and one in December. One was six paid holidays and one was five. Once this bylaw went into effect, right off the bat, they had to get retroactive pay overtime for any shifts they worked for any holidays. I believe one of the unions was almost $98,000 in retro pay. So these are the things that are in this bylaw that should just pertain to the non-union people because the remainder of people have union contracts that dictate their benefits. This is pretty much a benefit book for the non-union people, which will say what their holidays are, what their sick leave is, what their bereavement leave, things like that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next up is Vaughn Anokian. Please state your name, precinct number.
Vaughn Anokian, Precinct 4. How are we repealing a bylaw that applies to all positions of all employees in the service of the town and then replacing it with a bylaw that only covers 35? Wouldn't that leave many employees with no Personnel Bylaw?
Again, this bylaw really only applies to the employees who are not covered by collective bargaining agreements. The existing bylaw only applies to the 35 or so. There have been changes in the collective bargaining agreements so that that ability to capitalize on what's in the bylaw as well as what they bargain at the bargaining table has been removed for the most part. So this is really just changing the Personnel Bylaw for those 35 or so people.
But the original bylaw says that it applies to all positions of all employees in the service of the town and a bunch of other stuffs in Section 3.
One of the reasons why I think the original bylaw needs to be amended.
So we would repeal a bylaw that applies to all the employees and replace it with a bylaw that only applies to 35?
Yeah, it doesn't really apply to all employees.
Thank you.
John Lenahan, Precinct 1. Next up is John Lenahan. Thank you, John.
Quick question. Would the policies adopted through the new bylaw be available for town meeting members to see or other people to see? Would it be on the website, on the town website or anything like that?
Again, I expect that they would. I can't say that for sure because that's outside of my authority, but typically, what I see towns do when they do this, and again, this is not a unique model by any means, this is the trend and for a lot of good reasons. But what I've seen other communities do, what I've helped other communities do, is develop those policies and then they are posted on the website for the world to see.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Technical questions? I see no more. No more hands up? Okay, pro and con debate? Anybody? Seeing none? Oh, Karen, come on down. Please state your name, precinct number, and your statements.
Karen Clip, Precinct Date. I'm in favor of this because we've been operating under false pretenses. I think it'd be good to close the door on the union guys. They have their own. Let the 35 people have their world. Let's make them a nice handbook. Everybody knows their benefits. Fire stay in your lane, all the union guys, you stay in your lanes, and us regular folk that don't have a union will stay in our lane, clean, easy, peasy for the commander.
Thank you. Next up is John Rock.
Hi, John Rock, Precinct 3. I guess I would generally be in favor of this. It mainly applies, as I see it, to senior department heads or their senior assistants. And it seems that they serve at the discretion or pleasure of the town manager and the Select Board. So it seems like this would give the town government a little more flexibility. And I think if it's not fair, well, no, because a lot of people might leave or we won't be able to attract good talent, which we currently have. So I'm trusting that the town manager, the human resource department, the Select Board will adopt fair policies consistent with whatever other employees in town get. So I would generally be in favor of it. I think they need the flexibility to administer these policies.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Next up Cynthia Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3. I move the previous question.
Who seconded that? Just state your name, please. Thank you. What precinct? 2, Liz Giordano, Precinct 2. Thank you all. Okay, there's a move in the second to call the question, move the question. My voice vote only at this time. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? The ayes have it. I'm just going to have Town Council just tell us what the quantum of vote is on this.
Sure. So because this is a general bylaw, it's a simple majority vote. Only the zoning bylaws require the two-thirds. That's triggered by statute.
Okay, so it is. Thank you. Kate, it's a simple majority only. All right, are we ready? Okay, motion's on the screen. Please vote now. 96 yes, 6 no, 3 abstentions. I declare that a vote. All right, next up is Article 41. We already completed Article 40 on May 10th, so we're now on Article 41, and that appears on page 40 in the books here. Page 40. I'll give everybody a moment to get there. All right, need a motion by Vaughn Anokian and Trincon, please?
Move that the town vote to adopt the provisions of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded? Carolyn Campbell. Thank you for the second. Been moved and seconded. Finest committee report, please.
The Finest Committee voted 10 to 0 to accept and recommend to town meeting Article 41.
Thank you. I'll read the Municipal Regulations Report. Municipal regs voted 4 to 1 to refer to Town Meeting, Article 41. All right, now we have the presentation. Please introduce yourself to the town meeting.
Hi, Sharon Johnson, Veteran Services. Good evening, everyone. Currently, the town provides various exemptions of real estate taxes for disabled veterans and spouses under MGL, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22 through 22F. However, there's a gap in coverage. For instance, if an applicant becomes disabled to the extent that they become subject to a conservatorship, guardianship, or other fiduciary, or the property is placed in certain types of trusts, then they may be disqualified from receiving this exemption. In 2018, the Brave Act clarified the language consistent with a technical amendment filed by the governor, so it now reflects the intended purpose. By voting yes to this article for Clause 22G, the town will be able to grant the exemptions in Chapter 59, Sections 22 through 22F, to veterans and their spouses as it was originally intended. And I would hope that you would vote this clause in. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sharon Johnson. Sorry, what? Okay, technical questions? Eric Coleman, you're up.
Eric Coleman, Precinct 5. This says estimated cost is none, but I believe they're going to be reducing taxes for some. Do we know what the estimated cost is?
I don't have an exact number of the veterans that are getting, that would get this exemption that are in trusts right now. We have a total of 225 veterans or spouses that receive tax exemptions, 22 through 22F. Not all of them are, would apply to this 22G. So that is, that's an assessor question.
So there's no estimate of cost? Real estimate?
Thank you, Eric. Chet, you have a question? Please state your name and precinct number.
Pro and con, please.
Pro and con. Anybody else with technical questions? Pat, go ahead, state your name, precinct number, and your questions, please.
Pat Colburn, Precinct 4. I guess I'm a little thrown when you mention trusts because I totally understand a conservatorship, a guardianship, but many people do put a home in trust so that they don't have to potentially lose the home for nursing homes and Medicaid. Is there any distinction between the type of trust or why the home is in a trust? I mean, could somebody have it in a trust so that they can't have to lose those assets yet still get a tax break?
Okay, there are different types of trust that the property still has to, the veteran or spouse has to have the vested interest in that property. They have to live there. It has to be their domicile to be considered in that 22G.
If there's no income, there's no asset, it's just straight up as long as they live there? It doesn't matter why it's in a trust or what kind of trust?
It has to be their legal domicile.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none, I'm going to move right into pro and con debate. Chet, you're up.
Chuck Collins, Precinct 1. I'm very much in favor of this, being a veteran of the United States Marine Corps for 32 years, serving two wars. Whatever we can do for our veterans in this town is, should be number one priority other than the town budget. That's my feeling. We have, we don't have a lot of veterans left. Warroad II veterans, Vietnam veterans, they're all dying off. Luckily, I'm still here. It's 72. But I just... But I just hope that this town meeting and this body votes for this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Chet, and thank you for your service. Next up Cynthia Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. I move the previous question.
Hold on, there wasn't a lot of debate there, but if we wanna move right on, I'm happy with that. Any objections, anybody? Seeing, hearing no objections, we're gonna move on. Are we ready for the vote? Okay, please vote now. Oh, I'm trying to move on. Okay, I'm told by my town council I could just declare it. I'm declaring it that we cut off debate. Is that good enough? That's fine, she tells me. Okay, so I declare that a vote, so we're gonna, okay, I guess we already voted. Everybody voted?
Thank you.
Trying to catch up to everybody. One more time. Okay, article forty-one passes. Ninety-seven yes, two no, two abstentions. I declare that a vote. Next up is article forty-two. That also appears on page forty. Now, this is public works capital purchases. We usually separate these out. Any objection to not doing that? Vote on each one separately?
The motion, the motion does carry that each one of these is a separate appropriation.
Okay, Mr. Von Anokian, please, the motion?
That the town vote to appropriate the following amounts for the public works department, with each considered to be a separate appropriation. A, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars for two utility body pickup trucks with plows by transferring one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from article twenty-six of the annual town meeting of May twenty-seventeen, project two-one-four-four-six, South Coast Rail Consultant. One hundred and fifteen dollars, seventy-five cents from article nineteen A four of the annual town meeting of May twenty-twenty-one, project one-zero-four-seven-eight, defibrillators. One hundred dollars from article nineteen C one of the annual town meeting of May twenty-twenty-one, project one-zero-four-eight-six, DPW chipper box. Five thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars from article nineteen D one from the annual town meeting of May twenty-twenty-one, project one-zero-four-eight-eight, one pool car, and twenty-four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-five cents from free cash. B, fifty thousand dollars for multi-use vehicle with cap by transferring four hundred dollars from article twenty-two of the annual town meeting of May twenty-twenty-one, project one-zero-four-nine-four, stormwater compliance. One thousand five hundred and two dollars and sixty-six cents from article sixteen E two of the annual town meeting of May twenty-twenty-two, project one-zero-five-seven-nine, security upgrades, and forty-eight thousand ninety-seven dollars and thirty-four cents from free cash. C, sixty-five thousand dollars for an asphalt hot box trailer by transferring six thousand eleven dollars and thirteen cents from article nineteen B two from the annual town meeting of May twenty-seventeen, project one-zero-one-four-five, garage door openers. Six hundred ninety-two dollars and three cents from article seventeen B four of the annual town meeting of May twenty-eighteen, project one-zero-two-one-three, fire rescue tools. One thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents from article seventeen B three of the annual town meeting of May twenty-eighteen, project one-zero-two-two-five, emergency preemption signal. Fifty-six dollars and four cents from article twenty-six B two of the annual town meeting of May twenty-nineteen, project one-zero-two-eight-seven, fire vests, and fifty-six thousand three hundred and three dollars and twenty-nine cents from free cash.
Okay, just to recap, those three motions been moved, and they're all, each one was seconded by Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. Okay, now we have the presentation. Actually, I'm sorry, let's read the reports. Fincon committee report, please.
Finance committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting article forty-two.
Cynthia Walsh, municipal operations, please.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. Municipal operations voted four to one to accept and recommend to town meeting article forty-two.
Thank you. Now for the presentation. Please introduce yourself, Paul, to the town meeting reps.
Sure, Paul Jafun, Public Works. Mr. Moderator, would you like me to speak about just A?
Yes, please. Then we'll take questions and get into debate if needed.
Okay, so section A of this article is to replace two foreman's trucks, one from the sewer department and one for the highway department. The trucks that they are currently using are just not suitable for their jobs. So these are utility body pickups equipped with the plows that we've been going with the last few years. The trucks that will be replaced will just go in line as we hour the shortage of pickups and dump body trucks, small dump body trucks, for our day-to-day operation. And all the material is in your package here.
Thank you, Mr. Jafun. All right, technical questions, anybody? Okay, I saw Mr. Murphy rise first. State your name, precinct number, and your questions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Peter Murphy, precinct two. In summary, I see where you were closing out various articles there from various town meetings. One of the questions that I have is like you've actually taken money from fire rescue tools. And I thought previous articles, if it was approved, if the money was approved for a fire department, it had to stay within the fire department. Am I wrong in asking that question? Or wrong in that idea?
Well, I'll let you go along with that one. If I could have the town council. Introduce yourself again and just answer that question.
It's green. Oh.
It's a test this evening, but that's okay.
Kate Federoff, town council. Yes, so essentially, there is a body law, a piece of the finance, chapter forty-four, which allows an appropriation to be transferred with town meeting approval. So it can transfer to any department and for any purpose, an appropriation that was made for a particular use. It just requires town meeting approval by majority vote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next up is Mark Zemanian. Please state your name, precinct number, and your questions, please.
Yeah, Mark Zemanian, precinct one. My question is very similar, but it's about the South Coast Rail Consultant. I thought that we can move money for equipment from other hard goods article, but can we move consulting money to a hard goods article?
So any special purpose appropriation can be moved with approval of town meeting. What it means is essentially you have a certain amount of money that you appropriated for a particular purpose, and you haven't had the need to spend the entire amount, and it just would sit there forever, being unspent. So this is a way to utilize that money that's already been appropriated at a prior town meeting.
Well, we could, we could call the money back, but my second question through you, Mr. Moderator.
First of all, thank you, town council. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Through you to whomever can answer it. The South Coast Rail Consulting money, do we need it for the future?
I gotta rule that out of order right now.
It's a piece of it.
Well, it's a piece of it, but it's moving money from there, so.
Mr. Moderator, I could probably.
Well, I rather not, Lou, I appreciate you, but I'd rather not get into it. It's already been decided by town council. It's legal to move the money. So let's move on. Anybody else questions on this part A? Anybody seeing none? Let's move into pro and con debate. Mr. Murphy.
I actually can appreciate this article.
Name and.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. Have it moved. I can appreciate the vehicles that you're getting and all that, and I'm sure you'll put them to good use, but my comment is, where you got the money is very interesting because you're actually cleaning up some old articles. I'm glad to see that. And some of these articles, if you noticed more for item C, are older than three, four years.
Well, I'd like you to kinda.
This is a comment.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold on, Mr. Murphy. I'd like you, we're purchasing some vehicles here. I'd like you to kinda focus in on that.
It's the money for the vehicles.
That's right, but you're going back to where we already determined that it's appropriate and legal to move the monies from the source.
And I'm commenting about it's a good idea to take the money that's been sitting.
One time we waste on this. Okay, is that your comment?
Yeah, it's good to see that you're closing out articles. The sunset has come on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anybody else? Pro and con debate. Seeing none. Are we ready for the vote? We're gonna move right to the vote. Ready? Okay, please vote. I should just remind everybody, it's from free cash, so a simple majority. All the A, B, and C are all simple majority. Okay, on article forty-two, section A, it passes. Eighty-eight yes, fourteen no, one abstention. Declare that a vote. Now we go on to B. Mr. Jafun.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This, section B is to purchase a truck for the development services umbrella, mainly the weights and measures, gentlemen, now that we do that in-house. But I believe, if I'm not speaking out of school, Mr. Tisdale could correct me that this truck will be and can be used year-round and not just for the seasonal job requirements of the weights and measures person, but will be used for inspections and things of the like.
Can we have a vocal response? Okay, Mr. Tisdale says yes. Affirmative. Is there anything else, Mr. Jafun?
That's it. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, time for technical questions. Anybody? Okay, last call. Seeing none in pro and con debate? Seeing none, we're gonna move right to the vote. Are we ready? Please vote now. Okay, and article forty-two, section B, passes. Eighty-nine yes, twelve no, one abstention. I declare that a vote. Okay, now we're on to C. Mr. Jafun.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Section C of article forty-two is to purchase a tow behind asphalt hot box. The reason this is important is not only because it will replace a nineteen eighty-nine unit that's certainly not equipped with today's safety controls and standards, but more importantly, in order to do our job correctly, especially during the winter months and colder seasons when potholes open up after the freeze thaw events that happen in the early spring, late winter. In order to do that correctly and not fill them with cold patch and do them properly, we need to get real mix, tack them in there, keep the asphalt warm and hot and ready to be placed as efficiently as possible, so we can keep the roadways as safe as possible during those times of the year.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Starr, technical questions?
Okay for technical question?
Yes, it is. Go right ahead, sir. Just state your name.
Edward Starr, precinct six. In the wintertime, there used to be a problem in getting the asphalt to fix the potholes because they used to say they couldn't get a hold of the proper asphalt at that time. Will this remedy the situation now with this hot box?
Go ahead, Mr. Jafun.
In other words, will it allow winter repairs as good as they are in the summer?
It will allow for winter repairs, the best we can do.
So the repairs have been very, very good compared to the way they used to be ten years ago. It used to be like every week they'd have to do the same thing over and over again. So this looks like they're doing a good job.
No. Yeah, I was gonna say that's a credit to the employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Next up, Mr. Murphy. Name, precinct number, and your questions.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. You mentioned about another hot box. Are you going to, what are you gonna do with the old hot box?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. We can either put it up at auction or probably put it up for auction at some point.
Okay, I'm glad to see it. Okay. That's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. Anybody else? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to pro and con debate. Anybody? Seeing, seeing none. Mr. Collins, you're rising to speak. Go ahead, sir. Name and precinct number.
Yeah, Chuck Collins, precinct one. A few years ago, we bought a multiple purse truck that would be able to carry different items. Now, with this truck that we purchased, would that be able to carry the hot box? Or do we have to buy another item? That you're talking about the hot box that's towed behind?
That, that truck will not be used to tow the hot box.
No, I'm talking about putting on the truck. We talked about multiple uses of this truck. I'm sorry? I'm wrong? Am I wrong?
I believe this is a trailer, Mr. Jafun, that you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you repeat?
My, my question is that when we purchase this multipurpose truck, can we put the hot box on the back of that truck, on top of the truck? Almost like a, what do you call it, like a? Yeah, like, like, we'd have like a roll-off type vehicle.
We, we could have, and we looked at that. We, this was much more cost-effective and certainly efficient enough to do that. That truck that I believe you're speaking of is the catch basin truck and also a sander and or one of the brand machine trucks, one and the same. So that, that truck would not be used for this.
All right, I'm not mistaken. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay. We're in pro and con debate. Anybody else with pro and con? Seeing none, we're gonna move right to the vote. Are we ready? Please vote now. Simple majority. Okay, article forty-two, section C passes. Ninety-six yes, eight no, one abstention. I declare that a vote. Next up is article forty-three. That appears on the bottom of page forty-one. Article forty-three on page forty-one. All right, let me just turn the page here. Mr. Anokian, can you read the motion, please?
That the town vote to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to undertake maintenance, extraordinary maintenance, improvements, repairs, upgrades, modifications, and the like at town-owned buildings and facilities, including but not limited to, as applicable, professional engineering, architectural services, design, site preparation and demolition, installation, and all other incidental and related costs. And that to meet this appropriation, forty thousand five hundred dollars be transferred from article eleven of the special town meeting of November twenty-eighteen, project one-zero-two-seven-zero, Lucius Clap Design. Three hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-seven cents be transferred from article twenty-seven B of the annual town meeting of May twenty-nineteen, project one-zero-two-nine-one, DPW Facilities Upgrades. Two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars be transferred from article nine B of the special town meeting of October twenty-twenty, project one-zero-four-two-one, COA Sinks and Fixtures, and thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents be transferred from article nine J of the special town meeting of October twenty-twenty, project one-zero-four-two-nine, paving station number two.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded by John Inzamino. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting article forty-two. forty-three.
Thank you, can I have Municipal Operations, please?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three. Municipal Operations voted four to one to accept and recommend to town meeting Article forty-three.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jafune, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as this body knows, we have three buildings that are over a hundred and twenty years old. We have other buildings that aren't quite as old, but old and somewhat tired, including the systems within the buildings. This article is to help bridge a gap, if necessary, if one of, a catastrophic unforeseen issue came up with one of these buildings, that we would have monies readily available to fix the issue that we simply cannot solve within an operating budget.
Is that all? Thank you very much for your presentation. All right, at this time, we have technical questions. First up is Max Manian, please state your name, precinct number, and your questions,
Max Manian, Precinct One. Real quick, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Bill Rowe, the town accountant. Project one zero two seven zero, what was the original funding source for that, Bill? Was it a town funding or was it CPC funding?
I can answer that, Mr. Moderator.
That's fine, Paul, if you can, but...
That was CPC.
It was CPC? Is that correct?
What's your question, Mr. Inzamino?
Where, where the funding source come, I wanna verify that it was CPC funding.
Mr. Moderator, that was not CPC. I believe it's, let's see, it's transferred from...
Bill, as long as it wasn't CPC, that's satisfactory.
It's not CPC, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have clarified, it's not CPC funding.
That was my mistake, I apologize.
That's okay. All right, anybody else with technical questions, John Lenahan?
John Lenahan, Precinct One. This seems like it should be, is this something you'd ask for annually from here on out through the moderator?
Go ahead, Mr. Jafune.
I, I would like to, yes.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering if this is really an operating cost versus a separate, whether this should just be in your budget? It feels like a way around the budget.
Okay, why don't we do this? That's really a policy question for a later time. You know, I mean, we're talking about whether it should be part of the budget or not. This is not for discussion purposes, we're just talking about this article, it appears before us right now in the warrant books.
It certainly impacts how I'd vote on it.
Well, you can take that into consideration for sure, sir.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, these, these would be for capital project, this is not for fixing a sink, this is not, this, this would be for larger capital expenditures necessary.
Okay, Mr. Lenahan, you have another question?
Yes, thank you.
Sure, go right ahead.
Would you have guidelines for utilization of this money? When you say it's a, for capital, I mean, we have definitions for capital, I assume.
I, I could give you one example, I guess, is if a boiler went or an air handler went, and it's, I believe I say in my email, and it's July second, and we have to replace an air handler for fifty thousand dollars on July second, the whole rest of the year for the budget, we're really, really tight. This would allow us to give us a mechanism to pay for those sorts of things.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jafune. Pat Holburn, you're up next, please. Name and precinct number and your questions.
Pat Holburn, Precinct Four, through you to Mr. Jafune. I struggle a little bit with how broad this is, at the same time, it's, there's no particular project. Can you help me understand why this is preferable than, more preferable than going to the Finance Committee if you had to replace a boiler and having them transfer from their reserve?
Sure, I, Mr. Moderator, if I could bring up Mr. Colther, he'd like to explain, but...
Sure.
To that, to that point, waiting, if it's, if it was, if it were a boiler or something and that we had to replace immediately, you know, wa- waiting to get on an agenda, a public hearing with the Finance Committee, all that, in, in the middle of January, that's, this, this would just expedite that.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. We did a four-year capital plan this year, which will be a revolving document that will update every single year. So we're trying through that document to maintain and repair very old buildings. There are going to be items that are unforeseen, capital items, that are unforeseen and unbudgeted. You're gonna see this in the next budget with respect to equipment. There are gonna be items that we can't foresee, it happens. We have major mechanical breakdowns, we have major building structural breakdowns. I will give you an example, the town hall itself is missing many bricks. As you all know, when bricks start falling out, it, it undermines the structure of all the bricks in the building. We don't have it to re-point those bricks for four years. But if that broke, if that leak, if you will, became bigger and those bricks began to fall down, we'd have no choice but to re-point it sooner than we thought. If these were new buildings, this item would not be necessary, given the age and the uncertainty of certain mechanical items and certain structures in town, it would be short-sighted to not have a line item where we could address those items quickly. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Peter Murphy.
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Would it be appropriate to make a modification to this article, calling it Town Building and Facilities Emergency Maintenance? Would that be inappropriate?
No, not at this time. Let's keep it as is. Okay, the article stands, but thank you for your suggestion, I appreciate it.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'm over here. Mr. Moderator, could I just, point of information, it was previously stated that to do a Finance Committee Reserve Transfer, it would have to be a public hearing, and that's, that's not accurate, but thank you. It would just be an agenda, we'd have a meeting, but it's not a public hearing, but thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Anokian. Town Manager, would you like to say something?
Mr. Moderator, Council just made a good point, and I appreciate that, Kate. If we put it in the operating budget, that has an immediate impact on the tax base, taxpayers have to fund that. By using previous articles that have not been spent, we're not increasing the tax base, we're spending it, as, as Mr. Murphy has been arguing for a long time, and I agree with him, we need to use the money we have in reserve as opposed to increasing the operating budget and then, and then tax our taxpayers even further. So thank you for that, Council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Eric Coleman?
Eric Coleman, Precinct Five. How much is in the Finance Committee Reserve, please? Do we have any amount yet?
No, I think, I'm gonna call that out of order right now, because we're talking about the article here.
Well, yes, because if I, if I think there's enough money in the Finance Committee Reserve that would cover this, I would vote no on this article, so that's why I'm asking it.
Okay, I'll give, I'll give you one question on that. Do we know, can anybody answer that, Mr. Rowe?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. So we haven't used any of the reserve fund this year, so it's three hundred and fifty-four thousand one hundred and three dollars in the regular reserve, and then fifty thousand in the fuel reserve. So four hundred and four thousand.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other technical questions? Seeing none, let's move on. Pro and Con debate? Cynthia Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three. I'm in favor of this as someone whose heating system died on January second. Forty-eight hours to call a FinCon meeting, that's the minimum. My pipes would have frozen after four hours, and I'm not a three-story public building.
Thank you. Anybody else still in Pro and Con debate? Anybody, seeing no one? Are we ready to vote? Okay, we'll move right to the vote, please vote now. Article forty-three passes, eighty-five yes, seventeen no, two abstentions. I declare that a vote. All right, let's move on to the next article. That is, we completed Article forty-four already on May tenth, we're gonna turn to Article forty-five on page forty-three of the books, page forty-three. Roadway resurfacing. Give everybody a moment to get there on page forty-three. Now I ask for Mr. Anokian for the proposed motion.
That the town vote to appropriate two million six hundred thousand dollars to resurface and repair several roadways, included but not limited to the ones listed, including utility upgrades and, as applicable, professional engineering, architectural services, design, site preparation and demolition, installation, and all other incidental and related costs. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow two million six hundred thousand dollars and to issue bonds or notes, therefore, pursuant to Chapter forty-four and/or Chapter twenty-nine C of the General Laws or any other enabling authority.
Okay, it's been moved in second by John Inzamino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article forty-five.
Okay, Intergovernmental Relations Committee. I can read that, they voted five to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article forty-five. Cynthia Walsh, can I have the Municipal Operations Committee report?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three. Municipal Operations voted five to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article forty-five.
Thank you very much. Now we're gonna hear the presentation by Mr. Paul Jafune. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Last year at this meeting, it was made very clear to me that the town and town meeting as a body wants their roads and its roads fixed. This is the first step, I believe, with a, with a very large investment, albeit, to get on that path. If, if we pave all the streets listed in your literature here, combined with the ones that we paved last year and last fall, we will have paved fifty-six roads since two thousand twenty-two, which is equivalent to fifteen percent of the streets in town. This is, this is something we really need to do. We've really need to do this for a long time. We have a very good contractor, contractor under contract, would be for the duration of this work, which we would hope to get all done within this construction season. We've looked at the utilities in these roadways, which, which also, you get an added benefit for whatever water service is, or drains, or manholes that need repairs, we go ahead and do those ahead of time, and then the paving that we hope would last twenty, twenty-five years. So this is really just the first step in a long-term plan to, to fix all the roadways in Stoughton. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul. This is time for technical questions. Who was up first?
Yes, Mr. Edward Starr, Precinct Six. I've been on the street, in my street there, for over fifty years, and it was done about fifty years ago, and now we have a lot of yellow marks that have been there and off and on for ten years, and it's just like a Band-Aid. And I was just wondering, is there a list that I could get a hold of that would show the streets that propose to be resurfaced?
No, I wanna know the difference between major and minor.
Is it on the list? Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't catch.
That's okay, Mr. Starr. Thank you very much for your questions. All right, next up is Mr. Peter Murphy.
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. Looking at the list, can you explain, number one, what, what the areas, one, two, three, four, all the way down, is that in order the streets will be done?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, that is not the order that, that were the, those were simply labeled the areas that we looked at, first, second, third, fourth, and et cetera.
Okay, I believe in the previous meeting, you mentioned that you would be publishing a list on the town webpage, and I haven't seen that yet. Is it possible that as far as, you could put approximate dates on these and publish it?
Not at this time, it's not, but approximate dates would be late summer, early fall.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We're really, we're really, you know, it's really up to the scheduling of the contractor.
So you have...
Uh, uh, you had your two questions.
It's a continuation of...
No, no continuations.
It's a clarification of the question.
No clarification needed, I understand. Thank you very much. Sorry there, Mr. Murphy. Next up is George Stolinski, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Stolinski, Precinct Two. On page forty-four, you have the brackets, one, two, three, et cetera, et cetera. I live on Chapman Road, which is in Indianapolis Speedway, with all the cars that go racing down that street, that does need severe repairs, but at the same time, there is no backup, like you have on all the other pages, between Section Four and Section Seven, there is no backup. If you take a look in the book, it lists all the, the costs per section, and I was just wondering why these two were not considered or put into the book. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Paul Bellevue. Pardon me? Oh, you want to answer too?
Yes.
All right, I guess we, can we get an answer, Paul, please?
Yeah, the, the answer is, if it, if it was omitted, it was by mistake, and I apologize, and is it on the spreadsheet though? It's, it's Section Four.
And is it on the spreadsheet though? It's, it's Section Four. So, Peter's Drive and Chapman Road were priced together. And that, and the one hundred ninety-two thousand and change is, is the estimate that we received from the contractor. I apologize if it's not, I, 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 I'm sorry, I don't know what to say. If it's, if it was omitted, it was a mistake. Be happy to share that when?
When it comes to?
Tomorrow, when I get back in the office.
Sure, maybe perhaps you can get it on the website for clarification. Appreciate it. Thank you, Paul. Next up is Mr. Bellevue.
Paul Bellevue, Precinct Three. I was just, I was just looking at the book number two with all the estimates in there. And I didn't, I noticed that some of the estimates were missing. Maybe it's just a mistake. You have them all listed in Book One. And then on Book Two, you have the list of all the estimates from T.L. Edwards in Corbett and Bisbee. And I, I don't see an estimate in there for that one. Just that I live right there, so I was looking for those.
Mr. Moderator, I would, I would give the same answer I just gave. I?
That's okay.
I thought, I thought I forwarded all the material along. I didn't put the book together. But if it was omitted, it was a mistake. And that's it.
Second question. So, the true list is the one in Book Number One?
What's your question? I didn't hear the?
The true list of the streets to be paved of the, in Book Number One, right?
Yes.
We're going by Book Number, they wanna know if they're gonna, can go by Book Number One.
Yeah, page forty-four.
Or you wanna clarify that at a later date?
I see the list. The question is, are we gonna pave all these streets?
Yes.
That is the intent.
Okay. But I did, in the estimates that you have in Book Number Two, I don't see an estimate for those streets.
Again, through you, Mr. Moderator. If it was omitted, it was a mistake. And we'll get it to you.
Okay. I'm just, just curious. I didn't, you know.
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is Carolyn Campbell. Carolyn?
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four. I have two questions. First, how do you decide which streets are gonna come up for repaving and when?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. There are a few different factors, one of which being what has to be done underground, what has already been done, what the gas company will allow us to do, and then the condition of the roadways themselves. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. And my second question is, what's the difference between minor and major rehabilitation?
That's a very good question. The, so, the minor and the major and the preventive maintenance and there's another category that, routine maintenance, comes directly from our pavement management plan that was last done in two thousand nineteen. So, we, we have not updated the pavement management plan since two thousand nineteen because before last construction season, the list hadn't changed that much. So, that list from two thousand nineteen, our pavement management plan contractor labeled and designated all the roads in what condition they are in those four categories.
I'm not sure that, that doesn't answer my question.
I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry. I?
What is the difference between a street that is gonna have major rehabilitation and a street that's gonna have minor rehabilitation? Like, what type of work are you doing?
So, I just wanted to show on this list what the pavement management called out. This article is for milling and paving of the roadways, all of the ones on this list.
So, all the work that you're planning to do is the same? The category doesn't matter?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. I have on the list next up, Von Anokian.
Von Anokian, Precinct Four.
And you, Janice.
The town also gets probably seven to eight hundred thousand dollars a year in Chapter ninety, ninety funding for roadway work. Would we also be doing that in addition to this, another seven to eight hundred thousand dollars in roadway work?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The answer is yes.
Thank you.
This year, we will receive seven hundred thousand seventy-three, seven hundred seventy-three thousand seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mr. Janice. Janice, I'm sorry, Janice Schneider, go ahead, please.
Janice Schneider, Precinct Six. Do you have contracts in place pending approval from town meeting?
Contracts from town meeting?
No. Do you have contracts with these paving vendors that are in place pending approval of funds for, from town meeting?
Yes.
You have that, so you have that commitment. Are there provisions in those contracts that have these vendors dedicated to paving town roads versus commercial projects that they might take on? In other words, when you get to the end of the paving system, paving season, would the town priority be a priority?
Is, is it a priority to the contractor or is it a priority to us?
No, it's not then. That's what I was hoping to address the body on. With this, should you vote this this evening, we notify, we give them a notice of award for tomorrow morning. The contractor already has, I'm sure, a schedule of paving contracts. There's nothing with respect to schedule. We then sit down with the contractor to try and work out a schedule that works for us. The town of Stoughton has an extraordinary relationship with this contractor. We're a believer, we're one of the favorite communities of that contractor. So, with tomorrow morning, that starts a process that started almost a year ago. What happened a year ago is Paul had to work with Phil, our Water and Sewer Department, and with the gas company to determine the underground. I can't tell you how many communities I've seen where they, they paved the road and then a week later find out we gotta dig it up for gas lines or a hundred-year-old water line. So, that's coordinated well in advance, almost, almost a year in advance. Paul goes out and inspects every road. Phil looks at data from all kinds of sources, testing they've done, to tell us what underground water and sewer lines, how they're operating subsurface. From that, we meet and we coordinate a plan of attack given that budget for getting that all done in one sitting. We then go out and ask the contractor, and in this case, it's, I believe, T.L. Edwards, to give a price on that. So, tomorrow morning, should you vote it this evening, we'll be contacting the Edwards Company very early in the morning and asking to sit down and see if we can negotiate a favorable schedule. So, in what order they get done in, which was another question, it's more a function of Water and Sewer, whether they can get the, the supplies, the equipment, which are all on backlog. And we'll do them in the order in which we can coordinate with Water and Sewer. So, it'll be a complete project.
Yeah, I have a question here. How the figures?
Name, Peter, name.
Oh, Peter Vintresco, Precinct Eight. My question is, I'm gonna pick out some of them because they're basically listed the same way. Some of them are on page one of four on, on the book number two. Anyways, it gives you the dimension of the road. It's five hundred and eighty feet by twenty-two, by twenty-eight, by thirty, thirty-one. And it's saying it's gonna take two thousand, two hundred square yards. But it doesn't say how thick it's gonna be. I mean, we could have it an inch thick or three inches thick.
The question is the thickness of the, what's the thickness of the roadway?
Yeah, what they're gonna lay down. You're giving it the, the length and the width.
Thank you.
But you're not saying how thick it is gonna be. If it's gonna be an inch thick, they're gonna lay or three inches.
It'll, it'll be, the, the roadways will be at least three inches, in some cases, four inches.
Who checks on this stuff when it's going down? Because the reason why I bring this up, a lot of times you see these potholes, the, the finished course, it's like an inch thick, which is not sufficient enough.
We check on it.
Well?
That's two questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Vintresco.
Well, I don't think I got a, a good answer because, like I say, potholes, the top layers, an inch thick. And, and it's a subgrade. I mean, it's a subwork.
Mr. Moderator, the question was who checks on them, right?
Yes, that was the question. Thank you, Mr. Jafoun. Peter, thank you very much. Pat Colburn, you're up next.
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. I can't be the only one wondering why my poor street didn't make the cut if it's on a list or how do I get it on a list? Could you please just address that? Because I'm feeling just a scooch left out. Thank you.
Sure, through you, Mr. Moderator. There are plenty of streets that should be on a list and just didn't make this list because of some of the reasons I mentioned earlier. Gas company, water services, other utility work that has to happen. Worse conditions of some of these roads on the list. How do you get on the list? We're gonna do another list very shortly. And we'll go from there. You can, you can call. No guarantees, though.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Rock?
Mr. Garen was first?
Mr. Garen first? Okay, Mr. Garen, you're up. Name and precinct number and your questions.
Jim Garen, Precinct Six. I've been reading recently that there's a rather large project up on Page Street. And the result of this thing here is going to, it's going to result in seven hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred trucks a day. And I've already observed Route one thirty-nine with a corrugated surface that's, that's very ugly to drive on. What's gonna be the result of this if we have another fifteen hundred trucks a day running over the same and they're all heavy? What, what do we do about that? We should be looking at that right now if it's going, because once this project is finished, we won't have a chance to be able to do this.
Can, can anybody answer that, please?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. That, that roadway is not in, within this article.
Okay, good answer. Thank you. Mr. Rock?
John Rock, Precinct Three. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Paul. Paul, if your street's on the list and it's not sewered, does that mean there's no chance of being sewered for the foreseeable future?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Most likely.
Okay, is that it for technical questions? Seeing no more. We're gonna move on pro and con debate. Anybody for pro and con debate? Mr. Garen?
Jim Garen, Precinct Six. To you folks, let's ask the question, the, just the fact that you get on this list doesn't mean that the road is going to be done. My, my street was on this list through two, maybe three years ago. And the street never got any kind of paving on it. So, just because you're on the list doesn't mean you're gonna get done. Thank you.
Mr. Jafoun, would you like to answer and respond?
Sure, through you, Mr. Moderator. I believe I told Mr. Garen in one of these public hearings that his, his street is in need of a water main replacement first and foremost. And then we'll talk about the paving after that.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the reason for that particular street.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Garen, I, I, Mr. Garen, I understand your concern about your street. I'd be upset too, but, you know, there's a proper time and place for that. I'm sure Mr. Garen's door, Mr. Jafoun's door would be open for you too. Go ahead, Town Manager, please.
Mr. R, just to clarify a couple of things. I think Paul's tired. To the lady's question, if the road is in bad shape, we have to respond to it. Water is one of the considerations that gets it on the list. Gas is another consideration. But the general broken repair of a road is, because of safety reasons, is an obvious consideration. And with respect to my friend and colleague, this is his first year doing a list. What happened in previous years was, was just not on his watch. So, he, I know it's difficult to answer questions like that. Thank you, Jafoun.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Okay, I think we're still in pro and con debate. Do I see you? Mr. Murphy, go ahead.
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. Move the question.
Okay, there weren't that much pro and con debate. But if there's no objection, I'll allow that. Okay? Any objections? Seeing none? We're gonna take a voice vote. All those in favor cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? The ayes have it. Just to remind it, this is a borrowing article. So, it's a two-thirds majority, two-thirds required to pass this. All right, we ready to vote? Please vote now. Okay, motion passes. Ninety-two yes, nine no, one abstention. I declare that a vote. That's Article forty-five. Let's move on. Article forty-six appears in the books on page forty-five. Forty-five, just turn the page. Article forty-six, extraordinary repairs to fleet. Mr. Anokian, can I have the motion, please?
That the town vote to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to undertake maintenance, extraordinary maintenance, purchases, improvements, repairs, upgrades, modifications and the like for vehicle, equipment, fleet improvements, including but not limited to, as applicable, professional services, design, installation and all other incidental and related costs. And that to meet this appropriation, seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Second, it's been moved and seconded by John Inzamino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article forty-six.
Thank you. Municipal Operations, please.
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three. Municipal Operations voted for to want to accept and recommend to town meeting Article forty-six.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Presentation is by Mr. Paul Jafoun. We haven't seen you for a while, Paul. How you doing?
Very good, thank you. Article forty-six, very similar to Article forty-three. Although we appreciate the recent vote for the new capital purchases, new equipment and trucks, the reality is we still have a very old, tired fleet. Now, we don't, we didn't come in here and ask for seven new pieces of equipment, three new trucks, partly because of the talent of our mechanics. We know that stuff's gonna happen, transmissions, motors, things are gonna go on trucks and other equipment. And we also know that we have the ability to repair those items in-house. It's just a matter of time before this stuff happens. And we wanna be prepared for it with the same argument we used for Article forty-three. A few years back, the previous superintendent asked for money, seventy thousand dollars, I believe, for something extraordinary repairs to the sanitation fleet only. We've used almost all that money. We've done very well with that by just buying parts and having our mechanics do most of that work in-house. So, we're asking for the same thing for the entirety of the fleet and not just the sanitation fleet. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paul. All right, technical questions. I don't see anybody. We're gonna move right on. Pro and con debate. Mr. Garen, please state your name, precinct number and your statements, please.
Jim Garen, Precinct Six. Jim Garen, precinct six. I'm, I'm looking at this, I gotta refresh my mind.
Sure, take a moment.
I am, I am the one no vote for the municipal operations committee on this thing here, mainly because I don't like undesignated funding, project funding. It, it just bothers me that, that we're putting filing money out there, and it's gonna sit there and possibly not get used where, where it could be used for something else, more important later on. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're still in technical questions. Anybody else? I'm sorry. You want pro and con debate, too? Okay, my, the moderator can make a little error once in a while. All right, I hear ya. Thank you very much for your reminders. We're in pro and con debate. Thank you, thank you. Anybody else for pro and con debate? Seeing none? Are we ready to vote? Simple majority. Please vote now. Okay, Article forty-six passes. Eighty-two yes, sixteen no, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote. Article forty-seven, we completed that article on May tenth. We're gonna turn the page.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Article forty-eight, we completed that also on May tenth. We're on Article forty-nine, page forty-six, please. Turn the page, forty-six. If everybody's there, I asked Mr. Anokian for the motion, please.
That the town vote to appropriate the following amounts for the fire department, with each considered to be a separate appropriation. $55,000 for the purchase of CAD software by transferring $55,000 from free cash.
Second.
B, $170,000 for the purchase of two command vehicles by transferring $170,000 from free cash. C, $225,000 for the purchase of firefighting protective gear by transferring $225,000 from free cash. D, $70,000 for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus by transferring $70,000 from free cash.
Thank you very much. Motion's been made and seconded, each one A, B, C, and D, by Cynthia Walsh, one at a time. Thank you, Cynthia. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article forty-nine.
Thank you. Can I have municipal operations committee report?
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. Municipal operations voted five to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article forty-nine.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Just one minute, please. Get my paperwork straightened here. Okay, now we're at the presentation. Fire chief, please introduce yourself to the town meeting reps.
This is Mr. Moderator, Michael Carroll, fire chief. And just for clarification, in your warrant, it was, it's corrected here, I believe, but on, on the first page, it stated as $70,000 for structural firefighting gear. And then it, I'm sorry, for, yeah, for, and then $225,000 for SCBA's. Mr. Vaughn read it correctly, but it was printed wrong initially. I did try to catch it with Reggie, and she didn't, wasn't able to correct it in time, so... So it was just a, it was just a flip of the protective firefighting gear. That should be $225,000, and then the SCOP pack should be $70,000.
Okay, chief, as we go through...
Sure.
Article A is correct, right?
Yep.
Okay, then we can, each time we go through, if it's not correct on the screen, we can correct it.
Oh, sure. I appreciate that.
Thank you, chief.
So what we have here is, the, along with the progression of the fire department, our goal is, is to have a software program that will bring us up to date. It's a little bit confusing. Right now, we use IMC, which is antiquated. As a matter of fact, they just went through Rhode Island, and they started with Massachusetts Calling, fire departments, saying we will no longer support firefighting software in their, in their programs, which concerned us. So as looking around for software, First Do in particular is, is the company's name. They will transfer, they will bridge from IMC all the files that we have there into their software. No other software company does that. As a matter of fact, Chief Duty in Canton tried to get another company and have it transferred, and IMC wanted $40,000 just to come out and do that transfer. Here, it, it comes with the software bridges from IMC to, to First Do. So First Do, why is it important? It does everything for us. It does everything from our national fire incident reports, our Massachusetts fire incident reports, our scheduling. It does GPS tracking. We are one of the only departments in the, in the area that do not even have any type of MDTs, motor data terminals, in our apparatus. So when you hear us, if you hear us call on the air, we have to call multiple times, make sure we're getting the right address, and then, and then that's it. What would be nice with that, it's automatically populated when we get into the apparatus, ambulances, engines, shift command cars, and so the information's there. What else I did like about it was that Sharon has now up and running on this First Do software. Brockton is going to it. What that does for us, any mutual aid, whether we are going there or they're coming here, any information on a building we are responding to is populated right there on the terminal, so we can have accurate information. Our hydrant locations, our water mains. You know, and then there's a little bit of a community connect here, and it was really sold on me. If, should you, and it's all by volunteer, but should you want to add information as a resident in this community connect section, it will give us anything that you file that the fire department needs to know, and you can update it at any time. If you go away on vacation, if you have pets, if you have, you know, solar panels, if you have somebody, some elderly or, or special needs residents that live there, we will have all that information when responding to your house. And again, it's what you wanna provide. Voluntary, voluntary, I like that. I like that idea because, you know, sometimes people, there's some adverse conditions when we get there, and if we can know that going in, we can pre-plan that. It's, it's vital, vital information. So to me, I think this software will catapult us into, you know, 2023 and beyond. It, and again, it's, we really do need to catch up to date with some of this technology.
Thank you very much, Chief Carroll.
Yep.
All right, technical questions? Mr. Jim Garen?
Jim Garen, precinct six. Through you, Ms. Moderator, to the chief. Will you have to hire a special operator for this CAD system?
For, she's...
For the CAD system?
No, no, no. We will be. So First Do will come out, and we will work with them, the fire department itself, and we will, we will integrate it in. We will start with the National Fire Reporting System and all the other things. The only thing we might hold off on is what we call our PCRs, our patient care reports, which we do with Azol software now. But eventually, we'd like to transfer into this, so everything's under one umbrella here, and one... And this is a very good company. They've been around for a long time, so I feel very confident. But no, we will, we will not need anybody special to come in. We will work with IT and, and, you know, attrition or stuff are very competent and with any of the glitches, but this is really just fire software.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Garen. Peter Murphy?
Peter Murphy, precinct two. Chief, the information that you get, will that be kept up in the cloud, or is that something you're gonna have to add more memory to your system?
No, that's cloud-based. That's a cloud-based system.
Thank you.
Thank you. Becca?
Becca Marks, precinct seven. The $55,000 for the software, is that for just licensing, or is that for licensing and training?
No, that's for licensing, training, and they suggested we, we go more with a very simple tablet. So that will be on the initial startup, yep.
So the vendor's providing it. Then the second question is, is the $55,000 a yearly licensing cost, or will the residual licenses go down because you're not adding in the other costs in subsequent years?
Right, so it, so first of all, that is the initial startup. It will go down. The way they make this is it's basically a pie, and you take and choose what you need depending on your department's needs. So right now, we would not need the PCR, the patient care report software aspect of it. But, you know, on the initial meeting with them, a couple of meetings with them, I, you know, I tried to put in the money, the right money that would get us up and running, and then we can decide from there. So I would like to say prices go down every year, but I feel like they're gonna go up, so I don't wanna put that, well, I just did. Anyways, my goal is, you know, to, to just use what Stoughton Fire needs and how we adapt to it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Bellevue?
Paul Bellevue, precinct three. Very interested in the part where you said that information could be stored. How, how would that process take place? Would, would it be like a website that you'd input all your information into, or would there be a questionnaire? Would you have to go to the fire department? How would that work?
So, so my goal on, so the community connect was really exciting for me, and I, I just, in the virtual meeting we had with them, they only touched on it, so I did a little bit more research. But my goal in Stoughton would be to have, have fire department representatives of every community thing. Maybe we have things at the library. You can always come into the station, have a kiosk set up that you could come. We can assist you, adding the information that you want. So it, it'd probably be kind of a launch thing, and then you can, you can address it from your home computer and take off what you don't need, what you don't want, or change, or just kind of omit it altogether, should you decide.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Next up, Linda Rinaldi?
Yep, Linda Rinaldi, precinct five. So after the launch of the software, will we see this next year in like your operating budget? Or will it always stay as a capital item?
So my goal would be to have it in the operating budget, although, although I say this with some caution, but my goal would really, to be as we move on, and should we move to a regional dispatch, is to have that picked up in that, so that it's not a cost. But I say that with extreme caution because I'm not exactly sure how long, you know, or whether 911 will be able to pick it all up. But I do believe that I can relate this to 911. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dolinsky, please.
George Dolinsky, precinct two. My question is this. I think you mentioned about having information available when you respond to an incident. Am I correct?
Excuse me, I...
Did you say that you can have the ability to have information available to you when you're responding to an incident in a private home?
Sure, or commercial, sure.
Okay, now, will this information be gathered on an individual survey of the homeowners here in town as to elderly, wheelchair, oxygen tanks on site, things that could be dangerous to your staff going into an incident?
So whatever you would want to provide. What, what also they are able to do is they were able to link to the assessors' information, too, as well. So any changes to a building, any new construction, anything else going on. But whatever the resident wants to provide, that's what we will have the information for. We're not gonna go door to door and...
Will that be on the town census, or would that be a separate?
No, this will be a separate, this will be a separate standalone software, yeah.
Okay, I look forward to seeing the questionnaire. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Mr. Monahan, go ahead.
Kevin Monahan, precinct three. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Would this, if we do go to the regional 911, would this be compatible? Or would we have to scrap it and get something else?
No, this will, so Sharon is with that same regional dispatch, and they are up and running with this software now. So they are able, so it would just, they will just kind of be able to integrate it with Stoughton Fire to the regional.
You all set? Thank you very much. All right, anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none. Let's go into pro and con debate. Anybody for pro and con debate? Seeing none. This is just for pot A. It's up on the screen. Are we ready to vote? Please vote now. Okay, Article forty-nine, pot A. That motion passes. Ninety-eight yes, one no, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote. Okay, pot B. Chief, could you just do me a favor and make sure it's correct on the screen?
Yes, that one, that one is correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, the, the motion is correct. The article was wrong, but the motion that was read was correct.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Just wanna make sure everybody's comfortable with the motion. Okay, thank you. Sorry, chief, go ahead.
So this article here is to, to purchase of two incident command vehicles. Incident command vehicle is a vehicle that's necessary equipment to handle emergencies in the field. All our software that we, we were just talking about would not only go into the front of this, but also in the back when we pull up the command center. So the other vehicle, so one would be the shift commanders, the other would be the training and safety. Safety being, he responds on scene, and it's imperative through the incident command system that we have a safety officer. And that holds with accountability of firefighters inside, on the roof, at all locations. So our goal is to replace, really, the two Fusions that fire prevention has. We find that, I believe, back in 2012, when two Ford Fusions were purchased, they were rendered useless then, and they're rendered useless now when it comes to trying to use that in even the slightest of stormy weather or bad conditions in, in the winter. You know, they're, they're pretty much out of service at that time. And where we find that effect, not only emergencies, especially big storms coming in, I like to utilize all the command staff. Those two individuals are not being able to be utilized. The other thing is that we lost out on a lot of permits that were scheduled in, in just the, what we consider up here in the Northeast, just a, you know, a coating. Those, they slide all over the place. They're just not heavy enough. So our goal would be to move, we have a, a, I apologize, a Chevy, Ford, two Ford Expeditions. One's shift command, one's a training. Move those to fire prevention and replace them with two shift command vehicles or command vehicles. They would be pickup trucks this time. Everybody is, seems to be liking, so Lynn, Brockton, a lot of your bigger departments, and actually Sharon just went to it, too, and I believe Canton is going to it. The F-150 is built much better nowadays. There's plenty of space, and in the back, the command centers now pull out, so it's a much better vehicle for, for our work. So there was a, there was a little bit of question. Maybe I can repeat this before it's brought up. It's the whole idea of, you know, e-vehicle or whatever. Our goal would be to go to a hybrid. The e-vehicles are just not gonna work for us at this time. I just can't see being out on a prolonged incident and seeing that charge going down. And unless they have a charging station right next to the hydrants till they get to that, I just don't feel comfortable at, at an incident relying heavily on electric vehicles. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, chief. Okay, this is the time for technical questions. Mr. Murphy?
Peter Murphy, precinct two. Just for clarification, you're adding two more vehicles to your fleet?
No, we're replacing the two Ford Fusions. We're taking them out. We're...
You're gonna get, they will be removed from the town?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and does the $170,000, does that include any equipment with these vehicles?
It does, yeah. It, it, it's the whole lighting package, the sirens, and then the command box and the... It, it, it's the whole lighting package, the sirens, and then the command box in the back, the, which is a, a motor, a data mobile terminal, mobile data terminal, sorry. And, and then all the equipment that, you know, we have, we have mapping, we have the Incident Command books ourselves. So it will allow us to track everything.
What was the vehicles, what brand?
F-150s.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Technical questions, anybody else? Okay, Ms. Anzavino, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Anzavino, Precinct Four. Through you to the chief. You, I know, based on your presentation that you had, you're buying two new vehicles, you're rotating the two that you're replacing to the Fire Prevention. You said the Ford Fusions, which were the Fire Prevention, you were gonna roll into the, the town fleet, if you will.
I was, I was hoping to, but really, I, you know, in, in talking, it's up to the town what I do with them. I don't know whether they needed them, and that would really probably fall on the town.
I guess that would be my question. I know that was your intent.
Yep.
Otherwise, I would imagine you'd be trading them in and getting something back for them. But I was just wondering if we could get that answered because they are, the Ford Fusions were the hybrids.
Sure.
And they would be allowed to go into the fleet, even though, you know, even with the Green Community, you'd be allowed to use those in the fleet. I was just curious if that was the intent.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with technical questions?
Well, I'd like to let him answer it.
Tom, Tom, may I ask you, go ahead?
Just to answer the gentleman's question.
Sure.
We've got enough fleet vehicles, we'll be trading these in.
Thank you very much.
We all set? Thank you, thank you both. Any other technical questions? Seeing none, pro and con debate? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Murphy, we're moving along though. All right, seeing no pro and con debate, are we ready for the vote on, this is B, just on B. Vote now. That's okay, I'll catch up to them. Okay, on Article forty-nine, Section B, that motion passes, eighty-eight yes, four no, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote. We're gonna move on to Section C. Chief? Did you just make sure it's on the screen?
Nope, this is correct.
Correct, thank you.
So this here is our two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to replace fifty sets of firefighting gear. When I say firefighting gear, that's your structural firefighting gear, your coat, your, what we call your hitch or your pants and boots. The reason why is they have a ten-year NFPA standard, they put ten years on the, the gear itself. We are coming to the end, I think it was back in two thousand sixteen, we, we got it through a grant, we replaced all the gear. And we've been buying gear through our operating budget and maybe some capital, but through our operating budget. And we wanna replace the other gear. And what that does is it allows for a second set. So it's very important that they have a second set of gear. So as in, you know, just as recent as, what, two months ago, multiple fires in town, or coming back from a fire in Brockton, they get in, they put their gear into the extractor, trying to get all the toxins and everything else that was picked up in the fire, and not having another set to get into. We have two sets, everybody has two sets now, but that first set is coming to the end of its life. So our goal is to replace fifty sets of firefighting gear. Now, somebody asked, well, you have, you have more firefighters than that. Well, not everybody, everybody, a lot of the younger ones that just got on, there's no need to replace their gear. So our goal is just, is to go ahead and replace that fifty sets. That's pretty much, yeah, I mean, it's pretty standard in, in the industry, but that's why I'm asking for that.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Time for technical questions, anybody technical questions? Seeing none, pro and con debate? Seeing none, let's move right to the vote. These are all simple majority. Please vote now.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome, Chief, okay? Let me just announce the vote, that's on Article forty-nine, Section C. One hundred yes, zero no, zero abstentions, I declare that a vote. Okay, let's move on to Section D.
So this is also correct, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much.
For you just a brief description. In, in two thousand seventeen, we received an AFG grant to, to buy new self-contained breathing apparatus, breathing equipment. There's, let me just try to sum this up for you. We also bought a compressor. Our goal is to replace the aging inoperable, inoperable SCBAs. The, the hit on me here is that the Scott Packs, the bottles and the pack itself, have gone from approximately sixty-five hundred to seven thousand dollars. And now I just got the quote for twelve thousand dollars apiece. So, and I need to start replacing this, but I don't wanna replace it all at once and put that on the town. So if I can take little chunks, right? Get, we're gonna replace some of the packs, we're gonna go through, they're aging, or, or they need to be fixed, and replace the bottles. And that's what we're, we have them hydrostatically tested every year. Some of them didn't meet the, the hydrostatic testing. So my goal here is to replace more of the bottles and then start replacing a few of the, the actual packs themselves. So it comes in two parts, the harness and then the bottle. The bottle's where I'm concerned. So that, what may see, twelve thousand dollars you'll get, not even, not even seven. But we're not replacing all of the packs themselves. I really wanna focus on the bottles, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief, technical questions?
Edward Starr, Precinct Six.
Thank you.
Six. I just wanted to question rescues in water. Does this include equipment for rescues underwater?
No, no, that would be, this is strictly for, you know, LEL or high, high exposure to atmosphere. These are not really made for underwater rescues.
So you don't have anything to do with rescues in water then?
No, no, that's, those are totally different.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none, let's move on to pro and con debate? Seeing none, let's go right to the vote. We ready? Please vote now.
Wow. First of all, I wanna thank you from the men and women of the fire department. We really appreciate that, it shows the support this town has for us, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Carroll, for your presentations on those, that article. Let me just declare that vote. Article forty, forty-nine, Section D, passes, one oh two yes, zero no, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote. All right, now we're gonna move on to Article fifty on the same page, forty-seven, right in the middle there. Article fifty, multiple small equipment maintenance purchases for Cedar Hill. Victor Beruza, can you identify yourself again, introduce yourself to the town meeting reps?
Good evening, Victor Beruza, Cedar Hill Golf Course.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Would you like a motion?
I think I would like a motion, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
This is Article fifty, can I ask you for the motion, Mr. Anzavino?
That the town vote to appropriate fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of several small equipment purchases, such as, but not limited to, sawed cutter, hose reel cart, push mowers, leaf blowers, greens maintenance supplies, ball washers, signage, et cetera. And that to meet this appropriation, two thousand four hundred and ten dollars and eight cents be transferred from Article nineteen F-one of the annual town meeting of May twenty-twenty-one, Project one zero four nine one Greens and Grounds Equipment. And forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents be transferred from Cedar Hill Fund retained earnings.
Second, second, motion is being seconded by John Anzavino. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article fifty.
Thank you, municipal operations.
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three, municipal operations voted for, yes, zero no, one abstention, to accept and recommend to town meeting Article fifty. I abstain due to my membership on the Cedar Hill Golf Course Operations Committee.
Thank you, Cynthia Walsh. Okay, now can we have the presentation, Victor? Thank you.
All right, Victor Beruza, Cedar Hill Golf Course. I'll keep it short and simple, basically, like we said earlier with the last article, with the new level of maintenance that we have due to the extreme jump in traffic, there's different levels of maintenance that go along with that. And some machinery out of our capital, retained earnings, sorry, would be very beneficial to save a lot of time, energy, and to keep the course. And the conditions at their new level of expectations to make sure that we can keep on this trend. So, in short, we're looking at, you know, sawed cutters, slice eaters, leaf blowers, utility cart, after cheat, I'm sorry, I thought I had it all in my head. Pruners, backpack blowers, it's just a combination grouped into one little article. That's it.
You all set?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Victor. Okay, this is the time for technical questions, any technical questions? Seeing none, pro and con debate? Was it technical or? Okay, I just wasn't sure. Mr. Murphy?
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. Victor, thank you, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All set, anybody else? Seeing none, we're gonna move right to the vote. We ready? Please vote now, simple, simple majority.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Article fifty passes, eighty-nine yes, eight no, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote, thank you very much, Victor. All right, we're gonna move on. We did Article fifty on, we just did that, thank you. Article fifty-one, new voting machines, that appears on the top of page forty-eight. Okay, I'm gonna call for a motion, see him on top of the game here. Go ahead, Mr. Anzavino.
That the town vote to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of new voting machines for elections, and that to meet this appropriation, seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Motion is being seconded by John Anzavino, can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted seven to two to one to accept and recommend to town meeting Article fifty-one. Mark Struck abstained from this vote, which is noted in there.
Thank you, municipal operations, Cynthia Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three, municipal operations voted five, yes, zero no, to accept and recommend to town meeting Article fifty-one.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Okay, now we're gonna have the presentation, and our town clerk, Stephanie Carrara. Please introduce yourself to the town meeting reps.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Stephanie Carrara, and I'm your town clerk for the town of Stoughton. I'm here tonight to present the information for Article fifty-one, the new voting machines. As you can see by this first slide, this is what we currently use. This is called an AccuVote machine. This machine has done the town very well. It's twenty years old. But what's happening is these machines are getting phased out due to lack of being able to fix them. Think of it like this, when you have a car accident and you have to get aftermarket parts and you can't get a Ford or a Chevy part, you have to get aftermarket, and that's what we're running into. And it's not cost effective. As you can see here by this ballot box, this is what we currently have. It's what it looks like from the outside, and that's what it looks like in the inside. These here are the two machines that have been approved by the state and federal agencies. We have a DS-two, two-hundred, which is by the Elections System and Software Company, and Image Cast Precincts, which is processed by the LHS machines. And we are, we work with this vendor as they are our poll pad vendor. After very careful research, I am recommending to this body the DS-two-hundred. Both machines are great. Both machines, as I said, are approved from both the state and federal guidelines. But I feel the DS-two-hundred is a, is a faster machine. It's, it's going to be much easier for our poll workers and voters to use. It has a screen on the top that when you put your ballot in, it'll say voted, and it'll have your number right there. So no one will have to look on the side to find where, where, where your number is 'cause in the, in the LHS Image Cast has a delay. The ballot box, which is underneath the light gray part, everything will be able to be housed in a secured area in the town hall. I will follow all procurement rules, and if this is approved tonight, I can let you know that it could be a lesser amount than the seventy-five thousand, but it will not be more. I put some information for the body out on the table, and I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Okay, this is time for technical questions, anybody for technical questions? Lisa, please state your name, precinct number, and your questions, please.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. So my first question is, do these machines have modems in them? I read in the documentation that it does.
One does, one does not. The DS-two-hundred will have the program on a stick, a USB, which will go into the machine. The, excuse me, I'm, I don't mean, excuse me, I'm freezing, so, sorry about that. So one will, one doesn't, but I will tell you this, that the LHS, if you look at the, the work that went into it, and the, if you look at the work that they put into it, it is a very secure, a very secure machine.
Okay, that's a concern for me because-
Can you use your microphone, 'cause I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm very concerned with a lot of research I've done, they've indicated that USB-
Lisa, Lisa, let me interrupt, my apologies for interrupting the speaker, but is there a question? As long as you get to a second question, that sounds like pro and con debate, you can come up-
I thought I was trying to answer our town clerk's-
Well-
-question about modems.
Let me just clarify, you asked a question, the town clerk answered it. Now you can ask the second question.
Okay.
And she can answer that.
I have another question.
Sure.
So, I'm reading here that the scanner captures digital images of each ballot, but it also says which are not a public record. Shouldn't every election be completely public with no secrets? What, what that means, Lisa, is, excuse me, Mrs. Lyons, what that means is when you go into your ballot and you color your bubble in, and you do your whole ballot, that goes in to the machine. in to the machine. Unless there's a recount for some reason, that's the only time everyone would see the ballots because they would have to be count, be counted. And, as you know, that when at the end of the night, when we go to, and I'm gonna go pretend like we have the old machines, we put the Endicod through and then we run the tape, that's when you would get your totals. So I think, I think what it means is, is that you would see your information on your tape, you wouldn't see the ballots because what happens is, is the ballots get locked up and unless there's some recount or someone's challenging the election, that's when we would pull out the ballots and we would do the recount.
That's my concern. We should be able to see the ballots and not have images hidden. A tape, a tape is not the ballots.
Lisa, excuse me, that's a comment, you can come back and provide your comments. Thank you very much for your questions. Uh, moving on, Mr. Starr.
Yes, Mr. Edward Starr, precinct six. Surely the, this young lady would like to have the list, how, number of people that voted in the last le- election in April. Is there a total number that you know of?
You can request an extract and I'd be more than glad to send that to you.
Because there were only like a hundred and fifty people that voted in, in the last election in the, in the Hanson School.
Okay, thank you Mr. Starr.
Hundred and fifty ballots, maybe three hundred total.
You might, do we come, I, that's a comment, okay, we, let's just move on.
Okay.
Okay. Next up, Mr. Terry, name and precinct number and your questions.
Uh, Richard Terry, precinct eight, uh through you as moderator to town clerk. Are these machines connected to the internet or any kind of a wifi?
They would have to be connected to this, uh, currently right now, they would have to go into the school wifi, kinda like the uh poll pads.
Is that wifi secure?
I feel it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Technical questions? Mr. Fox, name and precinct number please and your questions.
Juan Fox, precinct one. Being we do have a low turnout and we also hire people uh to do the poll watching, what is the rationalization of spending seventy-five thousand or maybe just letting those, those poll watchers uh do the job for, for less money?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. Poll watching and someone doing the work are two different things.
Okay, second question, uh, but there are people involved to, not just saying poll watchers, but others who could do that, correct?
Well, let me, let me stop there, that's a policy question. I, I think, I feel better if you take that to the Board of Selectment or the Select Board at some other time. Right now, we're just discussing this article buying this equipment. So poll workers, you know, take that, that's a policy issue, take that to the Select Board. Thank you. I'll let you ask one more question if you want. Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Cohen.
Robert Cohen, precinct five. Question is, what happens when a machine malfunctions? Can you tell us the process? How we go about this, please?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker.
Yes.
What would happen is if there's a, the machine breaks down or, you know, a ballot jams, we would get a call in our office, we would go to the precinct with the spare machine if there's something wrong with the actual machine itself and under policemen's watchful eye, they stand with us, we would take the AccuVote card out. See if you can put that first slide back up.
Can't hear you.
I'm having, um...
Yeah, she's asking for a slide, right?
I'm asking for it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Give her a moment.
So, we would go there, we would, with the police watching us, we would remove the machine. If the machine was malfunctioning, we would take out the card, which does not change the vote, 'cause before we take it out, we have everyone verify the number. So if there was a hundred and fifty votes on that card, when we put it back in, we put the new machine in with, with that card, it would say a hundred and fifty votes. Now if something's wrong with the card and the card's not reading, we have spare cards that are programmed for that such case, that we would take out the card and we would put the new card in, but it would still reflect the hundred and fifty votes that have already been cast.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You said you have to call the clerk's office and you have to come out. What happens to the people that are voting? Do we stop voting in these precincts till you come out and fix the machine?
You do not, excuse me, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker, you do not. What would happen is we would have the police officers stand by the machine and if you notice that some, um, on the black, in the black box, the slot is open and that's where hand counts go, so if people don't wanna wait, they can put it in the hand count and at the end of the night, those particular ballots would be hand counted by our tally clerks that get there at seven-thirty at night.
Am I through with my question?
I think you are, thank you very much, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cavey, did you have a point of personal preference?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Uh, through you to the town clerk, I just wanted to, you said that these were approved by the state and by the federal government. I just wanted to make sure that, that means that they uh conform with all mass general laws and, uh, federal laws?
Yes, if you look at both of the, uh, if you look at the packet that I put on the table, they are both signed by, uh, for the state, Michelle Tassanari, who is the Director of Elections and she's a very, um, nice woman, but yet you have to jump through hoops to get anything past her and for her to approve anything. So for her to approve these two machines, I feel very confident and they both went through the, uh, federal regulations and I, I'm very confident that these are both good machines that we could use. I just prefer the DS two-hundred because I think it's quicker, I think it's, uh, simpler for our poll workers, because they, you know, depending upon the type of election, sir, that it is, our poll workers can be there till, you know, fif- it's fifteen hour day, especially during presidential elections.
Okay, let's not talk about poll workers, I already ruled that out, but just the machines, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Stephanie. Mr. Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, David Laurie, precinct six. Through you to the town clerk, a question is, if you don't get approval of the article, how will the ballots get counted?
We will continue to use the old machine, but I will tell this body and I will tell you, Mr. Laurie, that I will bring this article back with, in every special town meeting, in every annual town meeting until we get these machines, because eventually, we're not gonna have a choice. The state's gonna come down on our town and say, you have to have them.
Okay, question...
Go right ahead, Mr. Laurie, last question.
Through you, Mr. Mo- Mr. Moderator, through you, uh, to the town clerk, once again, so we know that it's a network device with data and my question is, do we have any protection against infiltration as, as well as if we do get infiltrated, is there any way to mitigate what happens when we do get infiltrated?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. Mr. Laurie, you're a programmer.
I'm not a programmer, but that's okay.
That's what you told me in my office.
No cross debate, ladies and gentlemen.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm not a programmer.
No debating.
I'm not a programmer.
Okay.
What I, what my concern is, is that, that where this is leading, I don't wanna, um, answer it incorrectly and I think wh- what Ms., what the previous speaker is saying is, is a programming question that really should be directed to a higher office and not mine.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, can I reframe the same question?
You can re- reframe it, yeah.
All right, so...
Rephrase.
Are we using cy- cybersecurity protection that the town already has in place or is there a separate third-party organization that takes care of cybersecurity for the same network device?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I, I believe that we have very secure, I believe we have very, a very high secure uh network in the town of Stoughton and I believe probably we even have a higher one at the, at the schools with the children. So I'm very confident that we will, it will not, we will not be infiltrated.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I believe Carolyn Campbell, behind you Paul. You're good? Paul, please state your name and questions.
Stephanie, um, what, when you finally decide which, uh, which voting machine to go with, what, who's gonna be in the debate as to making that choice?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. I am the, I am the election official for the town of Stoughton. Um, we would have to, we would have to put this out to procurement and see what bids we get.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and precinct number.
Linda Rinaldi, precinct five. Through you, uh, Mr. Moderator, to the town clerk. How many machines do we currently have?
We have eight and two spares.
So are these replacing and where would they go? Like which voting area?
Through you.
And why?
Through you to the town, to the, to the previous speaker. They would be housed at the town hall, just like the current ones are. Um, we deliver them, actually, let me rephrase that. Election morning, the police come to the town hall and they pick up the machines and they bring them to all the precincts, just one through eight, which are currently at the elementary schools and one at the junior high. Then at the end of the night, when the election's over, the wardens put through the Endicod, they do what they have to do and then the police bring the machines back to me and we have the tapes and we do what we have to do in our office and then, once everything is done, they get locked in our vault.
So I guess my question is, is where would these two machines, like which district, which precinct would they go to?
We have eight precincts, so I would be getting eight machines and I would have two spares that would be held in a locked area in the town hall.
I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, we're still in the period of technical questions. Anybody else? Please state your name and precinct number, please.
Valerie Cohen, precinct five. You said that you think the network is secure, how do you know?
Because I trust our IT, excuse me, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. I trust our IT department and I trust the school's IT department.
Question's been asked and answered, so if you have another question, feel free to ask.
And one more thing to the previous speaker, they're cyber professionals, if you don't think that they're not professional, then that's something that you need to take up with the schools or, and, or the town side IT department. I have to believe that they know what they're doing, just like you have to believe that you know what I'm doing is the correct way to go.
Okay, thank you. Sandra Gropey.
Hello, oh, wait, of course, I have to move it down. Um, Sandra Gropey, precinct seven, um, question, I had asked Dr. Ab, I tried to ask him quietly, but he wasn't sure because he wasn't aware of the wifi. Could you explain, like, if, this is gonna use up the wifi, I know the wifi in the schools goes down frequently, um, we, as his parents, get emails often that, you know, the systems are down. So what would happen in the case of more capacity in wifi? What would the cost be? Um, and also, if it does go down, you said that you would have to have, you know, an officer come with a machine to help switch it out. I just wanna make sure that you're aware of all those.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer part of that for you, Mrs. Gropey, and then I'm gonna have the other part answered by our IT director, Trish Shropshire. When I said that, I was talking about the current machines that we have, the AccuVotes. So, I can't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for another department, but I will explain it this way. We have the poll pads and before I could even bring the poll pads into the schools, into the precincts, I met with the school to show them what they were and then I would need to be on your network to have them work. I understand the concern, but everyone has to remember, voting is changing, it's changing at a rapid rate. People can, um, vote, if you live out of the country, you can request an email ballot, I can email it back, can go back and forth, they have to sign a paper saying that, it doesn't matter if I see how they vote. People, we're gonna, we have early voting now, so the, um...
Excuse me Stephanie, can I...
I, I, I have to explain it this...
Well, just quickly because we're talking just about these machines.
I, I understand, but it, there's a point, I promise.
Go ahead.
So voting is changing and the amount of people that vote at the schools are not as they once were because people choose to early vote. Some people wanna go to the polls, but the amount of voting that we had during the 2020 election was incredible for early voting. So I, I, I don't think that having it one day, plus on big elections, the schools are closed, so the wifi shouldn't get interrupted. So now I'm gonna turn the technical part over to Trish Shropshire.
Hi, uh, Trish Shropshire. I just want, how are ya? I just wanted to say that both the school and the town, we share our network and our wifi.
Excuse me Trish, you're the IT director, right?
Yes.
I just want you to identify yourself as that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Trish Shropshire, IT director, really?
Well, it's important, thank you.
Okay, Bob, you're funny.
Thank you Trish.
So...
Miss IT director, go right ahead, thank you.
I know, I know, I know. Anyways, I just wanted to assure you that, um, we have, we share the same network, same wifi, we have firewalls that are monitored twenty-four seven, so we do have cybersecurity protection on the firewalls and our, our wifi. I also wanted to mention, and I haven't had this discussion with Stephanie, but she has the option of, um, getting the data on the stick and then sending it over securely through SFTP server, so I'm not sure how the data's gonna be sent over, but both options would be secure through our network. I just wanted to say that.
That's fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, who's up next? Johnny Zavino, I believe. Dan Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Johnny Zavino, precinct four. Just one question. Can you tell me why the machines are connected to the wifi? What, what's the requirement that they be connected as opposed to just being local in the school they're in? What are they communicating with, I guess? Why would they have to be?
Okay, let her answer the question, thank you.
Through, through you, Mr. Moderator, to, uh, Mr. Zavino. They have to be connected so that they can process the vote, so they can get the tallies. You don't wanna go back to the days when we go into the gym and we close the curtain and we make the little ticks and then open it, do you?
Uh, no cross debate, that's just, um...
Have to be connected, the machine isn't reading it by itself, that's all. It, it, I mean, if they have to be, but I just don't know why.
Well, through you, Mr. Moderator, for example, when we have the poll pads, they have to be connected so that we can check the people in or, um, because we're using the poll pads, we can scan the bar in on the back of your license. It's not, it's not mandatory, but it's an option and that's another way to speed the people through, but I can let you speak, um, to our IT director and she might be able to get really technical. Okay.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next up is Carolyn Campbell.
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, precinct four. I just have a quick question about the networks. Um, we've, I know we've had questions about the, like, the security of the networks of the schools that would be using this, um, and would they be able to handle all the additional demand? Do these voting machines use morbid demand than, let's say, when the schools are administering MCAS, which is also done on the computers? Um, through you, Mr. Moderator, whoever could answer that?
Go ahead Stephanie, if you can answer that.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. I don't think that these new machine, I think these new machines are more effective. So, where we use it a twenty-year-old machine versus a more high-tech, I don't think that they'd be using more of a bandwidth or, if I'm saying that correctly. Um, I mean, I don't wanna speak for our IT director and she can get technical, but I think that these would, would probably be using less because they're, they're newer machines, they're, they're made to be adapted... They're, they're made to be adapted to today's world as opposed to the world of 20 years ago.
So, um, just to clarify, you're, I mean, you're saying that the, I mean, I get the new machines would probably use less of a demand than the old machines? And would the new machines use less of a demand than, say, when the schools do computerized MCAS?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm gonna, not throw, uh, IT director under the bus, but I would prefer her expertise on this, because I...
Go ahead.
I know what I believe, but I would want to be more technical.
I can't really speak to the, um, MCAS testing, just 'cause it's, um, within the school system, but I know our network handles that. I'm sure our network would handle this. It'd be a lot less taxing than every single student taking MCAS. But, like I said, I'm the IT director on the town side, not the school side.
Thank you, that's, that's enough, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trish. Hang on a minute, uh, Von Anoki, and you're up next.
Von Anoki, precinct four. Are the current machines connected to the internet during voting?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, Dick. They're connected with a program card?
Are they connected to the internet through wifi? Are they connected to actual internet, the current machines now during election time?
I, I, through you, Mr. Moderator, yes.
The current machines are connected to the internet, is that correct?
I believe so.
Believe so, okay. What is the reason the new machines have to be connected to the internet? I still didn't really understand that from a previous speaker's question.
Go ahead, Stephanie. Whoever can answer that?
Can, through you, Mr. Moderator, can you repeat that?
What's the reason that the new machines need to be connected to the internet? The answer wasn't really very clear to me, that's why I asked the question.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. I believe that the reason why they are made that way is because we have to get the information faster, and I think it's a more efficient way and more accurate voting system, is the best way I can describe it. What I'm planning on doing, just so you know, is that when I get the new machines, I will have an informational, um, meeting, so everyone can attend and see the new machines and ask all the questions. Because although I respect your questions, you're really asking me, um, a software question that I might've just got a brief description on while I was getting my tutorial on it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dolinsky, you're up next.
George Dolinsky, precinct two. Uh, dual question. On the old machine, when somebody overvoted, where it says "Vote for two" and they vote for three, the ballot kicked out, or there was a write-in, and when the mach, ballot was inserted into the machine that's on the screen, the ballot fell off to the side in a separate box, and those were hand-counted in the evening. What's gonna happen in these situations where A, there's an overvote, and B, where there's a write-in? Are these machines that you're recommending going to discern the write-in vote? Or is it gonna still have to be hand-counted?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. Um, you're somewhat incorrect. If you remember, when you used to work the elections, how, what used to happen was, when someone overvoted in a race, it would kick out. The warden, which would be you, would walk over to the person to see what was going on at the, at the ballot box. You would ask the voter, "I'm getting a, a message on the window that's saying 'overvoted.' May I look at your ballot?" And if the person said, you know, it might say "Overvote in selectmen's race", you liked both candidates, you couldn't decide, but you could only vote for one, you could ask the person two things before you looked at the ballot. Is this how you wanna vote? If they wanted to vote for the two, you would hold the buttons down and it would go in. If they wanted to vote correctly, you could say, "May I take this out and I can spoil this out and give you another ballot so you can vote correctly." 'Cause, remember, everyone got, gets three chances to vote correctly at the precinct when you vote incorrectly on your ballot.
What happens with the new machine?
What will happen is...
What happens with the write-in? I'm sorry. What happens with the write-in candidate? What happens with that situation?
Okay. Remember, through you, Mr. Moderator. Remember when, with the old machines, Sam, if you can put up the, um, ballot box. Remember, this is what we have now. Do you see that plastic? It's kinda like a tent in the middle. The right side, if there's no, if there's no write-ins or, and no problems, they go on, the ballots would go on the right. If there's a write-in, or someone overvoted and that's how they wanted, it would go in on that side. With the new machines, that is eliminated. So, just like before, when you worked, you'd have to just go through the ballots one by one to see if there's any, any, anyone written or any overvotes.
What's gonna happen with these new votes on machines?
You had two questions already. Sorry.
Didn't get an answer. Okay.
And Mr. Fox, you already went around, where we, you already, you already stood and asked a question. We're not gonna go around twice. Thank you. Anybody else with technical questions?
Yes.
Karen?
Hailing onto what George said, Karen Klip, precinct eight. I'm a poll worker. Stephanie, in the new machine, if it doesn't separate them, when I come in as a tally clerk or as the warden, what am I gonna do?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. What will happen is, on the new machines, when someone overvotes, it'll come up on the laptop. For, for better, for the best description, it'll come up on the laptop screen and it'll say "overvoted", and then you'll say, "Do you want this?" And then, they say yes or no. "Oh, I didn't know I overvoted." "Okay, we can spoil this out. You'll take it, you'll spoil it, you'll give it to..."
No, I understand that, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure...
No, no, I'm just going through the process.
What am I gonna do at the end of the night? Before, I had two piles. And it was very clear what I was gonna do, whether I was gonna give my tally clerk. Now I'm a little confused.
So what we're gonna have to do is, they don't have that separation in the DS-200.
So they'll be handling, we'll be handling every ballot that night.
Just like you used to do before we got these.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Scardino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Scardino, precinct one. Stephanie, do these machines, um, um, allow for stickers in a sticker to election?
Through you to the moderator. Um, I'm sorry, I'm a little tired.
That's okay.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker, yes. As long as they are the correct size, 'cause there's a certain size that they must be. You can't use your return labels that you get with your name and address on them.
All set, Mr. Scardino? I gotta go to Mr. Gito for a point of personal privilege. Go ahead, Mr. Gito.
Mr. Moderator. There are a lot of questions being asked about these machines, and I'm wondering if we should table this and get the manufacturer or somebody to come in to be able to answer the questions, or if we should just go on. So, I mean, if you would like, I would make that motion.
Well, no, hold on, Mr. Gito. I appreciate your, those thoughts, but it's only 10:19, we still have some time. And I won't leave it up to the wisdom of the town meeting reps. We have about 10 more minutes. We can get a couple more questions, and if they, they want to, we can get into the pro and con debate. Continue this evening, just to get this over with.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. Um, Mr. Gito, I'm planning on having the vendors come down and for, um, an informational session. So I'll have one vendor come down, which would be the, uh, DS-200, ESNS. They will come down, show the machine. Everyone can ask all the technical questions that they're asking me and, and our IT director. And then the other vendor will come down. I had already arranged that prior to, um, having this article.
I understand that, but the people who are sitting in this room are not going to hear those people, and I don't know whether or not... I guess what I will do...
If you wanna have a motion to table...
I will, I will make the motion to table, and we will find out whether or not people want to table it or not, or just go on. So that's my motion.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Gito. Is there a second? Seconded by, uh, George Dolinsky. There is no debate on this. I believe it's a two-thirds. We're just gonna double-check that. Uh, let me have town council double-check that. I know you're very knowledgeable, but give her a moment. Two-thirds. Do we need a date on that?
Till the next town meeting. It could be...
Well, okay, let me just clarify what town council, uh, stated. You put it on the table, and then we'll, once, if it passes, then we need a motion to take it off the table. Doesn't have to be a date certain. Everybody clear on that? And we need a two-thirds vote. No debate on this. Very quickly, sir.
Point of information, Dave Laurie, precinct six. The purpose of tabling, which I'm not totally against, would be if we could get the vendor in to talk to us before we voted.
Yeah, we're not gonna discuss this.
I'm just saying, the purpose of tabling...
I, Mr. Laurie, I understand.
The purpose of tabling. The question is, can she get a vendor in?
Let's leave it up to the wisdom of our town meeting reps. They get, they decide if they wanna table this or not, it's up to them. All right. Now, if I don't have a clear understanding from my ears here, that it's two-thirds vote, I have to go to the clickers. Are we, can we set it up quickly, or... Okay, we'll set it up quickly. Give her a moment to set it up. Excuse me, no, we're not debating this. Okay, this is to table this article where we're at now, until another time, until the town meeting reps want to take it off the table. No, no, you, I'm, I'm trying to explain this stuff. I'll have town council explain a little further. Excuse me.
That wasn't the motion. Had there been a date certain set on the particular, it would be, you know, clear to the meeting when it would be taken up again. Anyone could move to take it off the table at any subsequent town meeting date.
Okay, we're not gonna get into all the points of information.
Mr. Moderator, Karen Klip, precinct eight. We didn't ask to see vendors to buy a fire truck. We didn't see vendors to buy breeding machines. We didn't see vend, we didn't ask to see vendors on anything we buy. Why are we asking for a vendor on this?
You have the option...
Thank you, Mrs. Klip.
You have the option either vote it up or vote it down, this motion. Once we get it set. Are we ready? This is motion to table. Please vote now. We need a two-thirds vote. One way. What's the vote again? Okay, the motion to table fails. We had 22 yes, 79 no, and zero extensions. I declare that a vote. Um, we can continue the debate this evening? We good with that? Okay, we're still in the technical questions section. Please state your name and your precinct number, please, and your questions.
Yeah, Dex Lanson, precinct five. Would it be fair to say that these new machines would be more efficient, more secure, faster than our current 20-year-old equipment?
Stephanie, go ahead. Is your microphone still working?
Through, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker, yes. That's what I'm trying to get across to everybody. And just a point of, um, information, when I was hired for this job, I was asked to modernize the office. That's just not putting papers on the internet. That's bringing our voting, making it more adaptable for everybody. And these machines are 20 years old, and eventually, if a piece breaks on them, I'm not gonna be able to fix it. That's the reality of it. And we will have to have one of these two machines. And it could be more money, because the way the world is now, everything's going up. I want you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, technical questions. Mr. Cohen? No? Okay, anybody else with technical questions? See and none. Pro and con debate? Okay. Let's give everybody a chance to get to the microphones. Okay, I won't accept any, um, motion to move the question right now since we didn't have any pro and con debate. We need at least a few people up. Okay, who is up first? Cynthia Walsh, let's go with Cynthia for us.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. I'm gonna have to be carried out of here. As the previous speaker mentioned, we have to keep moving forward, and I know for some folks, that's scary. But I'm in favor of new machines. We want more people to vote. Now, we know in other communities where people have been just told, "The machines aren't working, the machines are down, go home and come back in two hours." Well, how many folks are that dedicated? We want people to be, be able to walk in, they slip their license through the pad, they vote with the new machines, they're on their way to work, or shop, or home, or wherever. So, come on, folks, let's be reasonable.
Thank you. All right, uh, next up is Pat Colburn.
Pat Colburn, precinct four. It pains me to say this, Stephanie, but I'm going to have to vote no. The question of what data will be transferred online is an incredibly important question, and I appreciate, Stephanie, that you don't have the technical answers. Totally respect that. That's why I would've tabled it. We lost that vote, but I don't feel in good conscience that I can say okay to this when we don't have the minimum answer of what data is being transferred. So, yes, I'm in favor of new machines. If it was just strictly manual machines, absolutely I'd approve it, but I, I can't say no without those answers. I mean, I can't say yes, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. Um, it's the same information that gets printed out now that I, instead of, I, I can't... You're entitled to your opinion and I respect that. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman, quickly, please.
Yes, when, when somebody makes a comment, I, I think it stops at that. There's no answer for a comment. Is that true?
True.
Thank you.
Right, well, yeah, we're not gonna look for, I'll, I'll give you a couple minutes for a wrap-up, if needed. All right, next up is Lisa Lyons, then Becker, Becca, then Lester Davis, and we'll go up the line here. Okay, Lisa Lyons, please.
Lisa Lyons, precinct two. I come before you to ask for your no vote on Article 51. On a known potential for corruptibility of voting machines and a fiscal responsibility basis, politicians from both sides of the aisle have been raising the alarm on election fraud. Clint Curtis, a former programmer, admitted at a U.S. House Judiciary Committee back in 2000 that he wrote the programming to secretly fix elections whereby votes were flipped and logs fixed to control an election outcome. There is a known hostile relationship between the corporations selling the machines versing the programmers requesting independent field testing. Neither town clerks nor independent programmers are allowed to test these machines outside the parameters given by these corporations. This is non-transparent and takes control away from the voter and the town clerk. The counting of your vote needs to be transparent and visible to all. Our votes can be hand-counted for all to see. Precinct three had 173 cast votes in our last election with failed machines and hand-counted in short order. No more secrets. Our vote must count as voted, not as programmed. The limitations set by these corporations and the complexity of the software and machines, including the machines noted in our package, raise grave concerns... including the machines noted in our package, raise grave concerns with their potential for manipulating the votes. We could have the most trusted town clerk, and they would never know a vote flipping or the other myriad ways the vote can be manipulated. Our town clerks do not supervise the count. They read the output of the machines and its program software. We need to heed the warning of a multitude of politicians and programmers who have risked everything to warn us. Further, given the mountain of debt our town faces for the next 15 years and a $2.3 million dependency, it is not time...
Stand by. Hang on a second, Lisa. We're timing it up here. It's relevant, it's somewhat relevant to the issue here. The moderator makes that discretionary call. Please allow me that discretion. Thank you. We have... Next time someone yells out here, I'm gonna ask you to leave the room. Okay? We just gotta get through this. You have about 45 seconds, Lisa. Please summarize.
Three more sentences. And a $2.3 million dependency on free cash for our operating budget. Fiscal restraint and prudence is in order. Our town budget and that of our residents face difficult financial decisions. Our free cash should be used to shore up our neglected capital, roads, and emergency funds. The country of France hand counts their ballots in one night. We are more than capable of counting our votes without new machines. Please vote no.
Okay. Next up is Becker. Okay. Well, I'm gonna go right, I'm gonna go back and forth now. Are you skipping yours? Okay. Very good. Lester Davis, you're up next.
Lester Davis, Precinct Three. Vote the money and let the town clerk make the decision on the best machine. These are 20-year-old machines. It's time to move on.
Okay. Thank you. Karen Clip?
Karen Clip, Precinct Eight. I've been working the polls since Gene Fleming's been here. I feel very confident in the people that we have working our polls. I am confident we have an honest, true situation going on here. These new machines are just gonna enhance it. This last election, we had a couple of machines break. Stephanie and her people were on it like that. If we do, if it breaks, we go to paper. Please vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Adger, you have a comment?
Just a comment. I can assure the body, if they, to the gentlemen's suggestion, if they vote the money, we will hold no less than three manufacturer-sponsored public information sessions so that people can get the answers they deserve to these questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tom Adger. You're up next. Can I have your name and precinct number, please?
John Rosenblatt, Precinct Seven. I agree with Mrs...
Move a little closer to the microphone.
I agree with Mrs. Colburn. That's one of the main things that's really got me totally wanting to go against this, about the data. But also, we're on the brink of poverty in Stoughton, and we don't seem to be going against anything. We just seem to be voting for everything. That's the way I see it, anyway. And I don't think it's prudent, a very prudent expenditure. And given that all roads are leading to one polling station, it's even less likely that it should be a good prudent expenditure. And there's such a small amount of voters, we could easily hand-count. And I think where there's so much discrepancy about the issues, and we're gonna get the facts after the fact, it doesn't make sense to me, and I hope everyone votes no, but I know it won't happen.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. David Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, Precinct Six, to the body. I just wanna say, I'm voting no on this because, because I just think that a lot of areas in our life, we would like to see things moving very fast. And it was argued that because everything moves fast, we have to move fast with voting machines. But I think that in certain parts of our society, there are places you just wanna slow it down, because you wanna have 100% confidence in what it is that you have with your democracy. Democracy should be 100%, not even just like 99%. It has to be 100% solid. And I think that it's moving so fast in the high-tech with the online, there's questions about the data being encrypted, whether or not it's gonna be very, very secure. And even if it is encrypted, there are people out there who try to break encrypted data. So we don't wanna just leave ourselves exposed, even if it's a fraction of 1%. It has to be 100%. So that's why I have to vote no.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Quigley.
Ed Quigley, Precinct Two. There's been a lot of disinformation thrown out here tonight. I'd like to just throw up a couple of numbers in favor of this. First number is 787.5 million. That's a fine paid by Fox News for making up false stories about voting machines. Another number, 63, the number of lawsuits thrown out of court about people making false accusations about voting machines. None of them have been true. And on a more humorous one, 5 million, Mike Lindell had to pay out by daring somebody to show him that his proof about voting fraud was irrefutable. The guy refuted it in five minutes, took him to court, and the court said, "Pay in the 5 million bucks you lost." This is mind-boggling to me. If we were pencil and paper, somebody would say, "Somebody put something in the lead of that pencil that writes it in invisible ink so that your vote won't count." Come on, folks. Wake up.
All right. Next up, Mr. Lynn Hand.
John Lynn Hand, Precinct One. I am anything but a conspiracy theorist, and I don't think that manipulation of voting machines affected the last election, but I do think there's a danger here. And I feel like we have not been able to get technical answers, and that's what concerns me. You know, why the voting machines have to be online concerns me, because, you know, the cyber criminals do not stop working. Even if they haven't done it yet, they'll keep doing it. So I'm against this at this point until we get better answers.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Well, no, I'm not... Hang on a second.
I just want everyone to know...
Stephanie, hang on.
I don't have a choice on this.
Stephanie, please, hang on. That's okay. We'll get to you in a few minutes, okay? All right. Next up is Bob Cohen. You have to use the microphone, Bob. Hey, Robert. Someone give him a microphone. I couldn't hear, understand a word he said.
Forty-five years, this town meeting has gone wacko. Amen.
Robert, did you have a motion?
Move the question. I make a motion, we move the question.
Okay. It's a second. Seconded by John Rock. We have that for the notes. Questions have been moved and seconded. All right. Is there any doubt in the moderator's mind? We'll have to do a clicker. All those in favor, need a two-thirds vote to move the question, say aye. All those opposed? I hear none. So a question's been moved. That's cutting off debate. So we're gonna go right to the... Stephanie, did you want a quick summary?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We're gonna go right to the vote. Are we ready to vote? Go. Please vote.
Thank you, everybody. I do appreciate it.
All right. Motion passes. Hold on a minute. Let me just declare the vote. Seventy-six years, 23 no, zero extensions. I declare that a vote. Mr. Cohen, is that you back there?
Oh, it's me. I'm gonna make a motion. We adjourned. Monday night at 7 o'clock.
Wednesday night at 7 o'clock. Wednesday night at 7 o'clock. Is there a second? Who's second in that? Carolyn Campbell's second. All those in favor by voice, say aye. All those opposed? See you Wednesday night, 7:00 p.m. We'll start right on time. Please turn your clickers into your precinct chairs. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.